Okay. I don't think my mics worked in my supersens.
The one upstairs is, but those aren't.
Okay. That work? You can start now.
Hey, I know.
Seconds to warm up.
Here.
Testing. Okay, we're good. All right, it is now four oh one P M on March fourth. I will open, I will call to order this Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Regular Meeting. As a note, I am opening this meeting because we have not had a Thompson Springs meeting yet this year, so the old officers from last year are still in effect. Present are Commissioners Tricia Dean, myself, John Kattler, Mike McCurdy, Mary McGann, Elodie McCandless, Bill Winfield, and do we have Commissioner Martinez online? Can we tell?
Not confirmed yet.
Okay. We also have.
That's online.
Great, thank you, Brian. So Commissioner Brian Martinez is joining us through Zoom. We have our Clerk Gabriel Whitaker, County Attorney Stephen Socks, our County Administration, or Administrator Mark Tyner. So with that, I will open our Thompson Springs Citizens to be Heard session. And again, the citizens to be heard session is just for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. If you have anything you'd like to comment about Thompson Springs, please come forward, state your name, and you may have anybody here to comment on Thompson. It's like not anyone online here for Thompson. Were you able to tell who's online? I can't see other than I see Chief Markham is with us, but that's it. Thanks, Steve. Online commentators. I don't see. Okay. All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The first item on our consent agenda is the approval of meeting minutes from December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Second item on the consent agenda is ratification of payment of bills, and those bills amount to two thousand and forty-two dollars and fifteen cents. Payroll, the amount of two thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. For combined bills, payroll, the amount of five thousand and twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
Actually, if you want to adopt the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Just move to approve the consent.
Okay, move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Hadeen. Second, Commissioner McCurdy, all those in favor, raise your hands. Thank you, Brian, and that passes unanimously. We are now on, we have no general reports, so we're on to our Fire Chiefs report. So we'll turn it over to Chief Markham, who joins us on Zoom. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, hi, get right into it here. As far as incidents go, on February nineteenth, we did have a single motor vehicle accident with entrapment. One person entrapped. That was on I seventy at mile marker two oh four. My two volunteers were able to get there. I was working in Moab. They were able to get there pretty quickly, stick the extrication. And then Moa Valley Fire Department showed up and they were able to get the patient out. Training wise, we've been training every Saturday morning from nine thirty to eleven thirty, sometimes longer, at the Thompson Springs Fire Station. And we now train every other Wednesday night with Moa Valley Fire Department since the annexation. My two volunteers are making really good progress towards their firefighter certifications, and they're really enthusiastic and really capable. So I'm super happy about that. All apparatus are in good working order, so no issues there, and the building and the systems are functioning properly. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mark. It's been a pleasure working with you these last four years.
Thank you.
All right. So we have no more, we have no new business, we have no old business future considerations. So we're moving on to our public hearing. So our public hearing today, we, I will open that public hearing. The public hearing is for the dissolution of Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. Stephen, I would, do I need to, I don't need to read the resolution or?
No, but would you have it put after six?
Yes, of course, of course. Okay, so I will now open the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Special Hearing on the resolution dissolving the district. Is there anyone here who has come to make comments at this public hearing? It's like not anyone online. Not also. Okay. We will keep this public hearing open until after six P M, when we will reconvene our Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District meeting, get back for a public hearing, and then potentially vote on that dissolution. So I will now recess the Thompson Springs meeting and turn it over to Chair Winfield for our regular commission meeting at four o'clock. Thank you.
You're getting us through that. Appreciate Chief Markham, too. There's a lot of effort that's gone in moving that Moa Valley Fire Department to take that over. So that's good that that transition's moving along. All now call this meeting to order. We've got the same Commissioners, Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hattler, Commissioner McCurdy, Commissioner McGann, Commissioner McCandless, and myself, Commissioner Winfield present, and Commissioner Martinez is on Zoom. So I will now, we'll stand for the. Let me just leave six years of the flag of the United States of America and contribute a public for which stands one. Hey, and we have no presentation or departmental work.
It's citizens to be heard.
Oh, we do have citizens to be heard. Thank you, Mary. So we will start with citizens to be heard in our four o'clock session today. We will have a second one at six o'clock or as close to six as we can. So is there anyone present that would like to come up, citizens to be heard? Please. Cara, go ahead.
Hello. My name's Cara. I know some of you well. I'm the Director of a small nonprofit here in town called Room for Room Restoration. And I was really alarmed this past weekend when I read a list provided by the U.S. House Committee on Natural Resources identifying federal offices to be closed around the country in the coming six to eighteen months. And it included a couple of offices here in Moab where the leases are running out. And those offices are the USGS Water Science Center over on two hundred South. You guys might be familiar with all of these. USGS Southwest Biological Science Center down on Resource Boulevard and the NPS Southeast Utah Group Office. These offices host at least sixty staff. I haven't been able to get a firm count, but there's a lot of folks that work in these offices, providing quite a lot of services that directly contribute to the safety of the community at large. They assist businesses and also local governments in a lot of different ways. I just wanted to highlight a couple of ways that those offices are important to the community as a whole. Leatherwork, US Geological Survey's Water Science Center monitors and maintains stream gauges. That includes gauges along Colorado and Green Rivers, which river companies use, all kinds of other people use that information for various things. And also one gauge on Pat Creek down near the Pat Creek Road Bridge, three in Mill Creek, two on either side of the Ken's Lake diversion, and one now a new one up north of Mill Creek. And those are pretty important to understanding flood flows in town and also providing, as much as they're not really intended to be an early warning system, they are an early warning system for town, and they're pretty important during flood season, as I think everybody knows. The Southeast Utah Group Office on Resource Boulevard, that opened in the late nineteen nineties. That was expressly open to improve efficiency for that, for this region of the Park Service, having offices or people who are working for Hogan Lee, Arches, Canyonlands, and Natural Bridges all in one place. In providing administrative, technical, and professional services for those park units. Also houses a lot of the maintenance staff and maintenance office. There's a warehousing facility there as well as the river shop, which is pretty critical for outfitters in the area and also, you know, for search and rescue with West Water and other places. And then the USGS Southwest Biological Science Center supports the Southeast Utah Group and other land management agencies. These are pretty important positions, you know, the research that they do, and they also perform water quality monitoring, sediment analysis, and work with Umtre. So these aren't insignificant impacts that these offices have on the community. I just wanted to urge the County Commission to consider writing representatives, Mike Kennedy, Senator John Curtis, and government, and Governor Cox's office, to explain the importance of these offices to our community and also to Southeastern Utah in general. Because my concern is with these being on a GSA closure list, they're not deemed essential. They'll be deemed nonessential and be shut. And it took a long time to get these offices up and running in a way that actually supports the community. I just wanted to raise that to yield attention. We do have this in writing, and he needs it.
Thank you. You can leave it over here with admin if you'd like. Are there anybody else that would like to come forward, please, ma'am?
Good afternoon, Michelle Hill. I consistently volunteer for the East Coast Department of Transportation over these last six years, lifting litter from one ninety-one chiefly. There is one spot north of the Colorado River Bridge, just over the courthouse wash, where there's a parking lot that's paved. But just beyond that, just before you're, before the Umtre sign is an area where semi trucks are pulling over and drivers are defecating there. And acquaintance pointed out to me the problem of E. coli. So I wanted to bring it to Grand County's attention because I'm not sure, you know, how land use is out there. However, there is a parking lot, maybe the trail mix for the pictograph hike or courthouse wash hike, Arches National Park, Grand County, Umtre. But maybe boulders in there, so they can't pull over there anymore to defecate or hit toilets. But if I can be any further service, I'm a doer, not much of, but I can help make things happen. Certainly be called on to prevent or prevention of E. coli on North one ninety-one near the courthouse wash parking lot.
Thank you. May I have anybody else that would like to come forward? Yes, who has to come forward now or later? Actually, we'll do it following the elected officials reporting, if that's okay. We'll go through the commission elected, and then we'll give you and Mr. Dunn each a moment. All right, do we have anybody online for citizens to be heard? Doesn't look like it. Nobody else in the lobby? All right, we will move on then to commission member disclosures. If any of us Commissioners looks like Mike and Mary, go ahead, Mary.
Still need to talk into this?
I think either way it works at the moment.
Yeah, to be still conscious of that work. My husband is a Commissioner on the Grand Valley Fire Commission. And so we have an agenda item that will about the Grand Valley, Moa Valley. Keep calling it Grand Valley.
Thank you, Mike, go ahead.
My wife works for the Sheriff's Department, and it looks like number six, Grand County Emergency Operations Plan, is based out of the Sheriff's Department, so.
It's okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we can move into our commission reports then. Chris, would you like to start us off?
Is it, do we have to do this anymore?
I think either way works is my understanding. These will go to the audience.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so on the twenty-fourth, I had a planning commission meeting. We had a property rights ombudsman come and do a presentation basically on land use one-on-one, state law best practices and subdivision practices. I thought it was excellent. On the twenty-fifth, I had a dark skies meeting. See, Stephen, I am working on it. With Utah State Extension, Friends of Canyonlands and Arches, and Code Enforcement, and myself, we're still working on that educational piece that has not died. We're, we're close. On the twenty-fifth, I had a flooding subcommittee meeting with Commissioner McCandless and Commissioner Winfield and our county engineer. We got an update on the stormwater drainage master, master plan. Dan is going to try to put an R F Q together so that we can keep that process moving forward. We got updates on the Jackson Street project, White Horse. These are all flood mitigation issues, the Easy Street Chapman, and then a Royal Crossing. On the twenty-eighth, I went to a Utah State University Climate Adaptation Conference, which was really great, just to have a lot of young students reflecting on their research that they're doing around climate change. On the third, I, just last night, I had a mosquito abatement meeting. Kind of an interesting thing that they talked about is this idea of, as we know, we have these couple large grants coming that will pump more water into the Matheson Reserve, both from the city and Wissa. But that also brings issues as to there'll be more mosquitoes and more issues surrounding West Nile. So just some ideas there, you know, slightly concerned is maybe I've mentioned in the past, they now have this large drone. I mean, it is quite large, maybe half the size of that table. And Shannon actually has his pilot's license via the FAA, and so they can actually now treat the preserve with this drone. And the Umtre site, which is really, really pretty amazing. That's it. All right. Okay.
I'm next, Bill.
Yes. I'm sorry, we'll just come around the room.
Okay, so I, on the twentieth, I attended a Responsible Recreation Group meeting. And there are tons of cool stuff going on with the Responsible Rec folks here. A couple of highlights where they're working on getting national recreation trail status for the Spider Motorized Trail, as well as the Nobu Rock Spike Area. The National Recreation Trail Status, it's recognized through the National Park Service, and it brings greater recognition to area trails. It helps promote the area and makes people want to come and utilize those national recreation trails. We in the Moab area already have five recognized national recreation trails. And those are the Brands, the Rock, Fisher Towers, Hiking Trail, Chronarch, as well as Hells Revenge, Motor Rescue. So it's a little bit, two more coming soon, hopefully. Also, the, they've been working on the search and rescue podcasts in partnership with KZMU. They're almost all ready to go, and they are going to highlight Moab area. Just Moab area, search and rescues, put, put the area in a good light, give great info on how to avoid common pitfalls in the area, and it'll all be kind of a homegrown and produced effort. And those can be, will be able to be found on all podcast platforms such as Spotify, et cetera. I also, let's see, I attended a couple of legislative committee meetings, along with Bill Melody, and where we talk about bills that are going through the legislative committee. The result of that, you will see in one of our action items concerning bills that we've chosen to highlight for either support or or, or to vote against. I also attended an audit committee meeting with Commissioner Martinez, as well as Commissioner Winfield, and we discussed many things as our first audit committee meeting of the year. I will let those guys discuss that a little bit more. One of the biggest highlights is that we need to get all of our component units working on their, on their opponent audits right now, so that we be ready for our June deadline. And to that effect, we've called our next meeting for May seventh. And again, I'll let Bill and Brian, I'm sure there's, there's plenty more to discuss there, and I'll let them go ahead and handle that. And that's all I have.
Okay, Mike, go ahead. Last night, the third, attended the airport, our Grand County Airport Board Regular Meeting just in for Bill. Commissioner Winfield. Went over several things, airport advertising policy revisions were made. One of the standing points is that from most special service districts and or airport boards and other boards, it was talked about leaving some of the advertising decisions alone to the airport director. I gave beast. I gave a, a wanted opinion that that shouldn't fall upon any board director, any special service director alone. I did ask that comm admin and County Attorney's Office were involved with that, and that went through last night with Mark getting more work, sorry, Mark. But they will be, Airport Director will be looking at advertising policies with you in the loop. Along with that. Bylaws, the airport board was going through their bylaws and submitted some some differences in previous bylaws and follow through on or the expected current bylaws. That'll be going through Stephen Socks' office one more time, pending legal review and waiting on that for the airport. Other than that, it was talk about future construction. And one of my concerns was a potential closer, closure for taxiway. It's called A one. But it's only going to be overnight for one night, and it's not going to be a full closure per se, so the airports will be up and running, so that's a good thing coming here. The other the other meeting I attended, in being said, last few weeks, I wasn't able to attend the Osta meeting, but I did catch up with Angela today and actually have something to be put in for future considerations. Also with that is the arena, Osta, Old Spanish Trail Arena, will be looking towards more funding coming into, in the next few weeks. She will be reaching out to you, Mark, again with more work, but the Red Board has put forth almost half of the expected bid pricing that's going to come in on some building, an entire outdoor arena. The outdoor ring is priced actually not as bad as I expected to be put forth, and I, I know it's still a big number, but me being the proponent for events, it opens up a lot of event possibilities for county-owned facilities, so. I'll be updating you guys in the next two weeks over the numbers, but as I, I can't say enough Red Board participating at, at the level that they're willing to participate or expected to participate is an extreme help to get county facilities. I mean, a brand new entirely county facility at a pretty cheap cost, but.
May I ask you a question?
Please.
When you say the outdoor arena, I mean, they have an outdoor arena and they have an outdoor exercise pen. Are they trying to revamp that current?
The expected plan is to pick up the entirety of the paneling that failed
Okay.
during that bull escape that Highway Patrolman hit. Everyone knows that story. Pick up that, take the panels that are capable of reusing and refinishing the current arena. That is the same panel type to the current arena. The outdoor arena would be completely new paneling facilities, shoots, et cetera. And up to current rodeo goers or event, event goers standards. Right now, we don't have that, and it's, we, we have it, and it's not usable to a larger facilities. This would be usable and come with a warranty or a guarantee of success at holding bulls in. So as we all know, that liability from last time. That's it.
All right, Mary, thanks.
The day after our last meeting, we had a Solid Waste Board meeting. We swore in Mike Dunaway and A.J. Thornton Moss, Howard Morgan's as board members, and we now have a complete board. We're very excited having all four board members, all the new board members are amazing. Mike Dunaway, L.J. Blackburn, Alicia, Alicia Wareham, and A.J. Each bringing to the board important skills and varied skills that are really rounding out the board and making a more successful and productive board. Ashley has agreed to be the treasurer. I've been the treasurer for seven years, and I'm very happy to release that responsibility. We're wrapping up the prep for the two thousand and twenty-four audit. And the Audit Committee know, I really told them the importance of getting that to Gabriel in a timely fashion, and they can't hold us out. And I will keep pushing that because it's really frustrating when we have deans on our audit because other entities aren't giving us their anything. We're, we're, we're working on, and most likely by our next meeting, we'll have a lease signed for the property at twenty twenty sixty-three, Highway one ninety-one, which is right next to the transfer station, so that we could begin the process of enlarging and improving the transfer station, making it, working on flowing the traffic so that it's safer. A moving truck, I mean, we're not going to be able to do any real major things because it's at least not ownership at this point. It will give us some time to find the finances to buy the property so that we can. But it will allow us to park our vehicles there, which will open up a lot and make it a lot safer. We've also found that there's a real possibility we're going to be able to take the recycle to Grand Junction. And there's two beautiful things about that is one, going to save on, you know, gas and carbon footprint, which is beautiful because and it also, we know where they're going. We're very clear that where the sources are going, so that we source it to the U.S. So that was, that is what, we're, have our fingers crossed that that will happen. We're looking at a new type of land cover, land from the landfills that will make us less dependent on dirt, which will also be helpful for many people. I know a lot of places are always looking for dirt, and this area surrounded by dirt, we're looking for dirt. And we're also redoing the bylaws and assessing the various salaries in the street. So it's exciting. Things are moving along there, very, are working very well. I wanted to mention the E. coli that was mentioned earlier by Michelle. I think that's something we should put on futures considerations. This is, that's right next to a drainage. And after our workshop last year, last week, I mean, last meeting, E. coli is a big deal. And we'd hate to have another area affected by it. And so you know, I guess the first thing is to find out who, who is the owner of that parcel of land? That would be an important thing to find out what did they? And then probably work with the various agencies. You know, I mean, the State National Park Service, UDOT, maybe Umtre even owns part of it, I'm not sure. And see if we can get a some type of facility there or keep people from parking. I think it's a very valid concern that was brought up, citizens to be heard. And I am also, I also went to the demonstration at Arches on Saturday. And I once again will express my concerns for our economy this summer. I'm concerned because I know a number of outfitters, people who do tour guide, tour tours, bike tours, river tours, Jeep tours, and everyone from Canada and Europe are canceling. We've lost half of their tours already this summer, which will have a huge ripple effect. Not just directly hurting their companies, but will also be hurting, you know, our hotels, our hotels, our restaurants. Ripple effect is huge. And so we do have two people representing our federal agencies. If you can express to them our real concerns for what's happening with our land agencies. Because we are in this community very dependent. Our BOM only has two law enforcement agents. And then you've cut down their employees. I mean, amount of devastation that has been done to our land by people who don't understand the fragility or the importance of our antiquities. It's huge and losing our land agents, people who work for them in our community is critical. I mean, I can't emphasize it enough. It's our friends, our neighbors, everyone around us does, I'm sure, has a friend or a relative that works for one of these agencies. I know friends that are sitting on pins and needles, afraid to make plans for a vacation. You know, they're, you know, what are they going to do? They're tightening their belts, they're not spending. You know, what are they going to do? They're tightening their belts, they're not spending their money, so it is a real concern, a concern for. Our county, I think it's a much. Greater concern than the concern we have about how we were advertised. So I. I'm glad we have a federal. Uh, two federal agencies, Kennedy and Curtis here and. For us to express our. Concern for our community. It's directly hurting us. And that's all.
Okay, I will go to Melody next, but first I just want to make the point that I've got it in my notes here and I will reach out to you dot. The head of the region for you dot Jared about the E coli issue.
And I'll see him on the twentieth, so I was going to talk to you.
I'll put it in an email, tweet him after the meeting.
Okay, cause yeah, that is a big concern.
All right, Melody, thank you.
Okay, so I've been um. Attending various UAC policies during committees, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and then the legislative. Committee meetings on Thursdays via Zoom. Um, as well as our commission legislative subcommittee with Bill and Jock, and so we've been discussing various bills. But I'm really excited that the Utah legislative session ended. It's been a lot, it's spent a lot of time, I don't have a lot to report on because there's just so much for me to pull out, but we have other agenda items that we can go through, um. Two weeks ago, I spent, I on Thursday and Friday, I was on the interview committee for our new commission coordinator position, so we have a new commission coordinator. That's exciting, um. Uh, Mary Brian and I met for our last Economic Development and Travel Council Committee meeting, we went through the job descriptions. And offered some changes to H R, and she's very useful those, and we closed our meeting as we had hit all of our objectives. Mary was so excited about that, um. Chris mentioned it, we had a theme for flooding, subcommittee, we updated on the stormwater master plan. Also, the American, All American Wash Project, and that's out on Easy Street. And they're going to be having an info exchange meeting at six thirty on Thursday at the Seventh Day Adventist Church. And invites were sent out to all those impacted property owners, so hopefully they'll be able to have a good discussion about that project. Last Wednesday, we had an Economic Opportunities Advisory Board meeting. They formed a subcommittee to create a pre-application announcement. And form, which is now live on our Grand County website and ready for distribution, I also emailed it to all of the commissioners, so you can. Um, look at that information as well as pass it out in your your groups. Um, they're hoping to purchase information out as much, to as many as possible, so we can. Tap for all the great ideas our county can come up with for the rural county grant and the rural communities grant. Uh, with a total dollar amount of almost a million dollars in funding, I'm hoping that we can find a way to use some of this. Grant money to also fund an economic development requirement for our community's growth. Um, yesterday, I attended a via via Zoom, the Community Renewable Energy Agency Board, and then moving along with the efforts to launch a default net one hundred percent. Renewable electricity option for customers of Rocky Mountain Power and all of our, the respective communities. And then I also spoke with Zandra about Beacon's future, and so next week on Wednesday, there's going to be a Beacon advocacy meeting, and so I'll be attending that as well.
Where's the company?
She doesn't have, it's to be determined, she'll let us know, um, just depending on how many people are interested, so it'll be the next Wednesday, the eleventh.
It's good. That one's coming here.
It's at noon, noon to one, and um. So it's gonna be kind of an ink tank to figure out how. We can save Beacon, so. And that's all I have.
Very good, I'll go next and then we'll follow up with you, Brian, if that's all right, as far as commissioners go. Um, I've attended the same audit committee meeting that several others did here, I know that there's a lot of information in there, just trying to get. Our internal audit and our external audit in alignment and. Just um, some of that, and we're hoping we'll make some of Gabe's job a little bit easier in the future, we're hoping to. Bring some of that about, um, I also attended a revolving loan fund board meeting with the cert and price as well as the A L G meeting up there. Um, I think at least two UAC legislative committee meetings since our last. Commission meeting that I've been a part of, and the list of bills just keeps getting longer, although with Mel as Melody and others have said, it'll be nice that it's over this Friday. It's gonna be interesting to see how much they crammed through in the last four days here. Because there's still a lot for them to do, um. I've been a part of the government operations steering committee, the revenue taxation, as well as the community development. Committees, all of those through UAC. And working on the different pills up there, I've also been a part of the gender review as other commissioners, Melody, and I believe Jock this week were a part of that, so. And then I participated in the stormwater. Meeting as well, and I didn't catch the dates, but I'll get them from you later for that one out at the Seventh Day Adventist Church, that would be um first. Good to try and catch up with that one, so and that's all I've got, oh, I've got one more, I also met with admin. And airport director and the president of Contour Airlines, and there is a multiple faceted effort there to try and. Increase the. On-time rate as well as other issues that we've had with contour and then with the upcoming trips to Denver that they're gonna start up to try and. Weak their schedule a little bit so it more aligns with a. Destination type of area that we are, so. Little bit of work that's ongoing there and he seemed very eager to. Please, and to try and. Get us to where we feel more comfortable with that service, so that's all that I've got, Brian, and we'll go on to you.
Yeah, great, thanks, guys, so. Um, let's see here, starting off on the twenty-fourth, uh, like was said before, I joined that audit committee meeting. Um, we went through quite a bit of things with the internal and external auditor. Uh, one question that I had was, uh, maybe Gabe, you can kind of give me an update on when we might be seeing the, like, the the date that we should be looking for, the. Um, the financials, um, when we actually like to see those out, um, since you weren't there on that meeting. Um, let's see here, other things that I went to was the uh Colorado River Advisory Board on the twenty-fifth. Um, Casey Snyder spoke and Carl Albright spoke on that, um, I was through Zoom, so I couldn't really hear all of the conversations too well. Um, but it was a, it was pretty interesting to see what was going on there. Um, I received an update from Cory, let's see here, at USU Cory Farnsworth. Let's just pull it up here real quick on uh, uh, the avian flu, I guess the avian flu has been confirmed in Emery and Carbine and San Juan County. It's likely here in Grand County, although we haven't had any cases reported yet. Um, if you do have a, um, you know, see uh dead birds around, don't handle them. Um, you want to go ahead and make sure that you either contact Cory Farnsworth or a veterinarian, um, just so that those can be checked into. Um, let's see here, what else did I have? Um, so uh, last two weeks, I spent the last week up in Italy, um, I've been out promoting uh, um, uh, NapTech expeditions out there. Um, I've had quite a few meetings with a lot of people out here interested in travel. Um, one thing is, is so I took notes, I actually had twelve of the major tour operators. Mentioned one of the reasons that they're not coming to Moab right now is the Arches reservation system. So that was one note that I took there, um, had quite a few conversations here, um, right now, I'm currently in Berlin. Um, also, the Moab Office of Tourism is here as well, promoting Grand County, um, had a lot of productive meetings out here. Um, I did hear from one group, though, that they are concerned with the uh, the current politics. And that they expect that bookings will be a little bit lower this year. Um, however, personally, you know, I have looked at with all of my uh, um, well, uh, through my bookings, and then we looked through. A couple of other outfitters, and we've only seen a total of about twenty actual cancellations through them. Um, which is, which is about normal for this time. Um, on that note, though, um, there was some current concern over the park service uh being closed. And we tried to work with a writer from Utah Stories to get a uh story out there published. That the National Park Services are uh, is gonna be open this year and that Moab will be open this year. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Brian, quick, I'm just wondering if you could tell us how the audio on your end is working um with our new speakers here in the. Chambers.
Yeah, everything's, everything sounds really good coming over this way, um, it might come through clear that uh, this way.
Yep, we hear you loud and clear, thank you, appreciate your report. We will move on to the elected official report, I'll start with you, Mr. Stocks, if you like.
Sure. Um, just going through, we've done interviews for the new uh position that my office was uh. permitted to have from the last meeting. Um. Additionally, just continue with the conversation regarding enforcement, um, I think that's an important conversation to have regarding dark skies, camping. And other issues, because we had an email that was circulated about uh potential future for the office, and. I think it's critical that the commission identifies what goals are. Um, so that moving forward. The commission will have that opportunity to know what. What it is that we want to see or what the commission wants to see regarding enforcement on those items, um, from my my stance, I think it's important to have laws in the books that we enforce. Uh, whatever the commission wants to do, just reminding that conversation, keep that uh conversation going. Uh, attended a number of boards, as I've stated, uh, board meetings in the past two weeks, if commissioners would like me to attend those meetings, simply let us know, myself, uh. This Hawk Knight or someone else will be able to join those meetings and uh provide a bit of help as as we can. Um, Grand County was selected. For the I C C R uh application, it's a. It it's a domestic violence program that's based out of Texas, we were selected with four other counties nationwide, uh detective. Oh, good heavens, uh, one of our detectives here spearheaded the effort and really pushed for us to be able to apply for that with the help of the victims advocates. Um, it was a good push, and C. Kevin as well, and we're fortunate to have been selected, that will come with a year of mentoring oversight from that organization that we're experts in the community to help train our law enforcement. Help assist prosecution, they'll fly us to Texas. Um, for a week-long convention this year and next year, after we complete our uh year kind of training. Um, that'll be paid for by that I C C R Institute. And it's a great opportunity and it really see cave in the victims advocates, my office, the Moab Police Department really did a fantastic job putting that together. Um. There were some bills on today that I think are really important to highlight, um, there have been some bills that have been proposed that. Uh, Utah State Bar is concerned about and um, the judiciary is concerned about, it, it's one of the few times where the uh Utah. Supreme Court's made public statements about some of those bills that are coming out, and I think it's important for us to discuss those. Uh. Additionally, uh, folks have expressed and utilized their First Amendment uh rights recently, I think it's always good for people in this community to be able to speak. Um, and speak their mind, I think it would be important for the commission to consider a permitting process, we've only had really two. Protests in the recent past, but we don't really have a a mechanism on the books to make sure that they have insurance and things like that, the two protests, or one of the protests was the uh Keen Springs. Protest that happened and the. Program organizer there for that protest did a good job communicating with the roads department, but it would be good to capitalize that, so I'm just. Bringing that up as a potential item for the commission to consider going forward, that's everything I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stocks, I will go to Jameson if that's okay, and then we will follow up with you, Gabe. Jameson, are you ready? Thank you.
Yep. You can just enable to where I can share my screen.
There you go.
Okay. So I figured it'd just be better to. Post January and February at the same time, so you can kind of compare. Um, obviously, we're getting busier. I've had a lot of people reach out, the news reach out to see if that, if our search and rescue team can cover the calls in Arches National Park. Um, if there was a mass layoff of their help, and we and we can and we will. Um. Also wanted to talk about, we had a individual go missing on February twelfth. And we use the iPaws. Integrated warning system that is forced to your phones. Um, that system worked, it was a former deputy that happened to be driving by that. Got that alert on his phone and was able to to locate that individual and and called us, and. I think her life truly was saved um by the former deputy in the iPaws. Alert system, I've also had some questions about if we could send out another iPaws, letting the public know that. If she was located and unfortunately, we can't send out another notification, we can only send out. The original one, we couldn't send out an uh another one for an update. Is there any questions on iPaws or alert sense from the commission? Cause there is a difference.
Look like it.
That alert sense is the one where you have to physically go sign up to receive alerts. iPaws is a. A federally. It's a system that FEMA put into effect, I think in like two thousand and six, and. You get that alert whether you like it or not, and it's forced to your phone, but there's a certain criteria of what. What we can send those out for, um. And I think that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
That'd look like it, thank you, Jameson, appreciate that, and we.
Just just one other thing to to give the the sheriff's office a shout out, they've um been working on the. Uh, pretrial services, and I think that's going exceptionally well, that's one of the positions that was funded for a year, and that service has been. Up up and running and it's been appreciated by uh the court in my office as well, and I think uh the sheriff's done a great job helping uh get that going with both the. Well, Deputy Kurt, Kurt DeLima Kurt Brewer, so I think that's excellent.
Thanks. Thank for that, thanks, Jameson.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
All right, Dave, on to you, and then we'll go to our federal officials.
Thank you, Chair. So um, I'll just respond to Commissioner Martinez initially, um, so I did see John Heatherly for Larson Company, our contracted CPA firm that uh runs our external audit. And I am awaiting an engagement letter and had expected. That to come from them by now, uh, but I'll be presenting an engagement letter to you all uh as soon as I get that this week on. I'll sort of um. Give the overview for what the plan is and and he spoke to um a desire to to meet uh. With members of the internal audit committee. Potentially before, during, and after the external audit process, he's very interested in that uh communication. Uh, there are fifty-nine election bills, there by by the last count um up at the state legislature, uh more than usual that the clerks group. Uh, is is uh sort of. Taking a position of oppose. It's often a point of pride uh for the clerks to collaborate with state legislators and not have to take that position of oppose. This is a, in a particularly luminous and challenging session. Um, I I admit that um, in the past, I guess, today, yesterday, and even. I my workload with daily operations here in the building has have been. Too, has been too high to even uh really uh keep track of what's been going on. So I don't have anything to report as far as where where Bill's been headed, uh, there's been a lot of uh conversation and discussion. And there's been a lot of clerks doing a lot of really good work advocating for vote by mail, um, and just continuing access, uh protecting access to the ballot for response. Uh. Let's see, I guess the the last thing I would say is that, you know, I've got a little bit of a skeleton crew in my office right now, I have one uh staff person on maternity leave, um. One staff person that went to the commi- commission administration office. Uh, so shout out to Chris and Jenny Beth and all they're doing to to keep things running without any uh hiccups. Uh, but I'm looking forward to a discussion to come regarding options, potential options for restructuring my office. With an eye for efficiency and improvements in the way that, you know, my office helps the county closely follow policy and statute and general rest practices. So I I always view these periods of change as an opportunity, so. It would be doing a disservice not to look at uh potential options at this point, so looking forward to those discussions, thank you.
Thank you, Gabe, um, we also have. Mr. Kaufman in the audience, would you like to give us an update?
Thanks.
All right, thank you, I just wanted to give you the option, all right, Mr. Dunn, we'll give you a moment here on the floor if you would.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the uh generosity and and taking time out of your. Regular business to have us here.
Sure, and for those of you in the audience that don't know, Mr. Dunn is a representative. Of Mr. Kennedy, our representative to D.C., so.
Yes, their district is the best district. And I have responsibility for the four southeast counties, and among my portfolio items are. Public lands, uh, energy. Um. Natural resources and uh things that don't necessarily concern you much here in Grand County, but um. I've been in touch with, I think, three, weren't you at that first meeting, yes, with three of the commissioners up on the hill. Uh, once with the meeting. Once with a meeting with my boss and at other times with commissioners Martinez and Winfield to discuss various items of interest to the county. Appreciate getting to know all three and happy to see the rest of you. I have a couple of things I'd like to report. First off, I met with the city folks before coming here and I had a chance to go out and look at the tailings site and also go out on Kane Creek Road to see all of the damage from the recent floods that seem to be recurring almost every year these days, as well as the infrastructure damage inside Moab City Limits at the various bridge crossings of the trucutaries. And I'm sure this is not an appropriate word to use in a county commission meeting, but that's a hell of a mess. And with the federal funds being withheld at this point, I'm sure there's a lot of frustration. Because where I am in your shoes, I would be extraordinarily frustrated. But until we get some answers, there's nothing really that we can add to the discussion because we don't know where this is going and how far it's going. And until we get official word, that's where we are. And I'm very sorry that we can't be more specific. Now, I have another couple of things that I wanted to talk about. We're planning on a district trip which will involve this county in April. The boss will be out on a three-day junket through three least counties. And we're definitely stopping. And in addition, the Washington staff is going to come out and we're going to be doing a work slash play get together in your county. That's also a name. So I will get dates to people as we get those, that schedule refined. Now, as for a couple of items that were brought up in today's meeting, I wanted to address those. First off, the federal office closures announcements. I'm from the North Country. I was raised in Brigham. And my brother was Congressman Hanson's district director. And the work that went through to save Hill Air Force Base took everybody at every level of government, and it took years to save Hill. The chopping block during the Clinton years. So this is not something that's really all that unusual. But when it comes, it can be devastating for the communities with Hill. It was the biggest employer in the state and losing that would have hamstrung like the entire state. And your county is not the only county being affected. But forming friendships with other jurisdictions and communicating with us in Congress and in the Senate, so important. And we love hearing from you. And as you find out more and as we find out more, we can see what might be able to be done to address losses in the community with this population. Hurts a lot more than in a larger place. And as far as the bills on elections, it's, there's unanimity among the counties I'm responsible for that the cost of covering or providing manpower to cover the drop-off sites is beyond the ability of the local counties to bear unaided. And we are watching this with you. Of course, I can't say what boss's position is because that's not how this business runs. Now, as for our trip, I would love to be able to interface with somebody on the commission or whoever you might assign to work with me to help develop who we will be seeing, who we, what we need to show the boss when he's here. And Commissioner McCurdy has volunteered to work with me on that. And I would appreciate it if that were an official thing.
I don't see why not. I don't think it requires a vote or anything. Why take it away, Mike, and just keep us all informed?
Hey, thank you. Unless there are questions, I'll go ahead and sit down. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, Mr. Dunn. Larry, come on up and join us.
Oh, there is a seat up there, isn't there?
Well.
Appreciate the opportunity to be able to be with you in person. And I apologize for not being able to get into the meeting last two weeks ago, I guess. Anyway, as far as things that the senator is doing, he has been extremely busy and I think you guys know the guys, pardon the expression, but guys is a generic term. And I think for the senator, it's like drinking from a fire hose. It's coming very rapid. And as far as us in the district, we're still trying to play catch-up on things. I didn't get a phone, an email, and a computer. The problem I have is that my smartphone and my computer have a dumb operator. And it's difficult to try and learn how to use them as efficiently as I will in the future. A couple of things that the senator is working on. The one is he's introduced legislation that will protect legitimate industries from the inequities that the financial community was acting on people last year and in the past, where if they didn't have the right politics or the right opinion on things, they were discriminated against. This will eliminate that, which basically brings the middle and fairness back into the business. He's obviously very concerned about the budget and has proposed to the Senate that the federal budget, first off, they need to get a budget. And secondly, they should follow the Utah model, which basically is a balanced budget every year. And that if they can't work to get a budget, nobody gets anything other than what they've had in the past year. It just goes forward in that way. That's one way to hopefully force people to come. That doesn't mean that there won't be cuts that ought to be made, but nonetheless, it's the idea creating a discipline to be financially. He has introduced a legislation that would repeal the death tax, basically the inheritance tax, and also to reduce gift tax rate from forty percent to thirty-five percent. May not seem like a lot, but at least it's going in the right direction. And the whole issue of taxation is something that is wanting to continue the tax cuts that we've been enjoying for the last few years. Although we continue to. He's a co-sponsor with Senator Lee in the navalness, navalness, in the Naval Readiness Act, which would allow the US military to acquire naval ships from European and South Pacific countries that are friendly to the United States. So that we can rebuild our fleet because it's been depleted and it needs security pieces. He's co-sponsor Wildfire Prevention Act, which basically says that the Forest Service and BLM federal agencies need to review their procedures for dealing with wildfires from past as well as current and determine which is the better approach between the wildfires rather than just moving straight forward, assuming that everything we're doing today is correct. I don't really go in and make sure. He is a sponsor in regard to a bill which would recognize and penalize someone just how it happens that to try and prevent the Chinese theft of our IT technology. I think it's widely known and has been for some time that they're pretty good at stealing what we create here in our in the United States, both in terms of technology as well as those other inventions. One last thing, not last thing, on this, on this note, I have another page of a few notes, but this, this page is that he has sponsored or co-sponsored a bill that would bring back in for an individual a charitable deduction in addition to the standard deduction. The amount of contributions to charitable organizations has declined dramatically since the new standard deduction came in and there was no specific deduction or charitable contributions. It would be a limit. I think, I think the amounts were nine thousand dollars joint return and forty-five hundred dollars, I recall, for a single return. At least it begins to recognize that we need to pay attention to some of those deductions. Just a couple of other things is that the West Act, he's a co-sponsor on the West Act, and this is one which would repeal the existing BLM rule, which limits grazing, recreation, and other purposes on federal BLM lands. Make it so that that's, it's back to the true meaning of FIPMA, which is that it should be multiple use on those lands. The internet broadband deals out. If those efforts go forward and federal funds are given to those, an act that would require transparency so that you can see where those funds are actually being used and make sure they're not being wasted. So those are some of the things that he's been involved with and busy with the last months. Has a real interest in Grand County. And just want you to know that if there's something that, and I would say this too, don't hesitate. Reach out to me. Whatever you need to, to him. He's extremely busy right now and is unable to take a lot of personal calls, although he'll try and do what he can and respond with emails and texts and so forth. But if there's something that I can be of assistance, or he can make sure he can get some passion. Questions? Uh-oh. Y'all took his glasses off.
He's getting serious.
Throwing an off-home meeting, Larry.
Thank you for what you do.
Well, thank you as well. And please thank both the senator and the representative for allowing you guys to be here. We appreciate what they do for us and for the interest that they're taking right now and hit to some of our local employees for sure.
Well, I do understand that some of the things that are going on, and I would just express this before I move, that he is aware of concerns relative to what's going on with the federal government and the force reduction in workforce. And aware that there are critical jobs that ought to be maintained rather than just cutting with a meat cleaver. It ought to be surgical. And to this point in time, we haven't seen a whole lot of surgery going on. It's been more of a prior. And it's going to hurt the local areas here. In reality, speaking, not the senator, but the place where cuts need to occur isn't at the local loop. Which implies maybe where it ought to occur, but I won't say it. You can figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Just, just one other item real quick, just a reminder for everyone. Tomorrow, the Lieutenant Governor's Office is going to be putting on a hearing for preliminary municipality. Public comment will be accepted. It'll start tomorrow at six thirty. And it's scheduled to go to eight thirty at Star Hall. Publican is encouraged to comment on the feasibility constraints regarding the feasibility study that they have put out. So this is an opportunity for folks to be heard regarding the and that's tomorrow at six thirty at Star Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Stocks. Okay, we will move on then to our general business action items. We will start off with number two here, which is the library HVAC and solar panel inverter replacement. And Sean?
I'm asleep. Bye.
And Megan was here, but she left. Lynn.
We'll move down the agenda. Doesn't bring him back.
He's coming.
Okay, thank you.
It would be relatively quick. It's the establishing the Career Service Council. If we wanted to do a quick final.
What do you got, Mike?
I was ready to make a motion on number eight.
Okay, let's, let's move on to number eight and
There's one right here.
Oh, I had you, Chrissy. I'm sorry. Trying to help you.
I just went to lock up the courthouse, so we had to catch him. You guys just think it.
There is cameras.
Guys, impeccable timing for blocking up. Always comes up my stuff. My first administrative department had reported. I went to go lock up. I thought you were busy. Ruth called me. She's like, where are you at? So, sorry.
All right, well, we are starting off then, Sean, with the library HVAC and the solar panel inverter replacement. If you'll just take us through that one, if you can, please.
Yeah, so Jason Groom, he's a representative of, what's his name?
McInnes Street.
McInnes Streets. Attorney for the library. This project is to I catch my breath. Sorry, guys. This project is to replace the the end-of-life units at the library as well as the inverter for the solar panels, which has not, have not worked since May. And also bring the control side from the city to control the HVAC to the library so they can, they don't have to call the city to change the temperatures in the building. That's how it's been for, since the library got built. What, what was, what that decision was made or why, but that's how it was. So it should make it, help make it a little easier for Harry to make it comfortable with the library. On top of, um, we do have one failed unit and two more that are limping along. So this was an opportunity to get everything done, do a one-and-done and not have to disrupt the library too much. So um, Meg wants to speak on situations at the library while those HVACs were broken.
Sure. So uh, from the library perspective, it's, it's been pretty challenging having the HVAC in the state that it's in. Um, sometimes we have to close unexpectedly uh when it's super hot out, and so many community members lose access to a safe place to go. Um, that's cool to be or be in storytimes or have access to computer services that they need to do for work or or whatnot. And uh, right now, we have a staff member whose workstation in the, in the staff room, there's glycol dripping from the ceiling right near her workstation, and so there's garbage bags that are draped over uh bookshelves that are in that area and trash barrels right there to collect the dripping stuff that as we understand, is just what we have to deal with until it can be fixed. Um, we've been dragging around the building um space heaters and swamp coolers and fans and things to try to make it work to keep people comfortable. We've had a couple of situations where it's felt unsafe, um where it will get so hot that someone might be about to pass out or various things, and that's where we're dragging around those fans and swamp coolers, trying to figure out how to um keep the building open, to keep the access um there for the public, um but also keep people safe in that area. And so um, we've just gotten used to dealing with that, and this seems like a good opportunity to potentially um address that in a a pretty efficient way.
Cool, perfect. And I can give uh some background from our side as well. Uh, um, we are engaged to work with the city of Moav um on a variety of mechanical upgrades citywide, energy upgrades citywide, uh, and some other deferred maintenance items that the city was needing to tackle. One of those scopes of work is the fluid cooler on the back of city center. It's right behind the smoke stack over there, that big metal behemoth, if you've seen it. Um, that essentially uh cools the ground loop um that you guys share with city center. So behind that parking lot, behind city center, there's a ground well um that the county library and the city center pull heating and cooling from via water source heat pumps in both buildings. And those are the water source heat pumps in the county library that are rapidly approaching or exceeding end-of-life. All those units are R twenty-two units. It's the old refrigerant. It's no longer legal to produce or import R twenty-two, so it's very hard to get. As Sean probably tell you, also very expensive. Um, and uh, uh, the, like Sean mentioned, the inverter um is also identified as being uh failed. Uh, part of this scope would be to replace that as well as the uh, the controls. Part of the reason that we approached the county initially, um because the RCPs are two connected systems. During our audit with the city, we needed to make sure the county, um which is also connected to the uh, the, that ground loop system, we needed to have a bead as to what was going on over there to make sure that we're not missing anything for the city side. And so in those discussions with Sean and with Carrie, we realized the issues that the county was facing. Um, trying to think of anything else importantly to say. Uh, uh, I, in the letter that's here, in the packet, um, there is a pretty substantial savings opportunity for doing this work concurrently. As you all know, it's, it's uh quite difficult to bring people uh from out of town to do these bigger jobs. Um, so having this concurrent work is a pretty substantial savings for the county. In addition to uh Carrie and Sean ran the numbers, and it's roughly like twelve thousand dollars a year of maintenance uh work uh being fed into these heat pumps. And that, and again, that's to support end-of-life units already. Um, in addition, the solar array, which is not producing. And then lastly, the controls. The control's visibility uh is not existent within the county library. Um, back when they initially built the system, the system in two thousand and six-ish, uh the controls were centered within city uh city hall, which means that uh the city is responsible for helping Sean, Carrie and Meg with bringing anything else online in the event of an outage, diagnosing issues and the like. So part of this project is to figure out a way to bifurcate those two control systems without affecting the city and with the city without city not affecting the county as well.
Mike, wanna start us off? Uh, two-part here. Uh, one, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, I moved to approve the fund, the contract with McInnes Street for the library's HVAC and solar panel inverter mechanical retrofits.
A second?
Uh, with that, I'd like to start the discussion or a discussion off. Uh, also, uh, just some quick fact points. I had some people raise some questions that that we're interested in. Uh, one, is there any? I understand the cost savings doing concurrent work. Are county facilities being fully county-funded? And is county funds in this project going towards city facilities? And if, if they are, what's the dollar amount?
They are not.
Okay.
Only county facilities uh are being touched here and only county funds, as far as I'm aware, are being used.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the other one was uh how many people, uh? Do we have an average number of just library attendants during the day? I, I didn't like seeing that we closed down. As a kid, I, I was one of those kids that sat in on the, the book readings and I like that to remain open. Uh, I just, what do we have for de- uh daily attendance?
I love that question. Uh, usually it averages around five hundred people a day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we've got uh kids programming happening every single day in the building, and so it's it's really disruptive and upsetting when we have to close down without notice on those things, because a lot of families and parents rely on coming to those things to be together and uh, but yeah, five hundred people.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hey, real quick, I've got a motion by Commissioner McCurdy and a second by Commissioner McCandless here, and we'll continue on with the discussion if anybody else has anything. Melody, go ahead.
I just have a question. If there's any, I mean, because the two pieces are connected, the city and center and the, and the county's library. Do, is there any kind of intergovernmental agreement that we need to put in place? I mean, are we, are they paying for anything for us? Or, you know, so I'm just curious on that.
Technically, they are paying for the power to uh run the pumps to push the water around uh to cool, to cool those that, that um to cool the water coming from the library. There are some pumps over in the library, but yeah, I mean, this has been brought up before uh in Carrie's uh department report. Um, but the city has shown no recourse to asking us for money. But if, it's up to you guys that we wanna get in the talks about that.
And the, the fluid cooler work that the city is doing um is that it's in the county. Um, essentially, that ground of temperature has risen above eighty degrees, which these heat pumps, if you think about it, are pulling cooling from an eighty-degree water loop. In some cases, it's approaching ninety. This dramatically affects the efficiency and the longevity of these heat pumps, which is why they're gonna be susceptible to premature failure to what the city is telling you. Placing that fluid, fluid cooler, which the city is doing under that project, will benefit to bring down the ground of temperature, which will then benefit the county as well. On intergovernmental agreements too, um we, we would be supportive of that and would like to facilitate that too, to be honest. Uh, we've done them in the past for projects like these, and they're pretty cool bridge builders. Uh, we, we found that to be very um kind of clear, partnership-focused, which is kind of what we're all about.
I've got a couple of questions myself, um, and maybe this can come from Gabe or we can do some research. One of them is, I'm wondering why um Sean's budget is putting eighty thousand dollars towards this. It would seem like this should all come out of the library's budget, or is that been standard practice that we budget money out of the county for the library? I know they're their own taxing entity, and it would seem like these expenses would come out of a, some sort of budget that she's saving for, for these larger items, and, and I'm just wondering if she does have some sort of a fund set up where she is planning for these things into the future uh on the library's side. So I'm, I'm curious about that. It doesn't have to be answered now, but I think it's important that we look into. I'm not sure if it should come out of Sean's budget.
Is that something that you're leading but would come out of Carrie's capital project budget? Or, or was that something that was coming out of the general capital? Do you know, Chance?
Um, I think, well, I, uh, one of the, the three units that I was originally intending to replace this year, um, I just, I just put it, I just put it in the budget with my side. I made sure it was on the pre- pre-authorized. As far as where it's coming from, I I, you know.
I would have assumed that when that work was done and it came time to code the expense that we would have coded or we would have sent to code it to the library's um capital facilities budget. But it's a good point to clarify, for sure.
Sure. And then another question, a couple of others I still have going forward here. Um, this seems like a lot of money to just kind of come out of nowhere here. And I'm wondering, and maybe the county attorney would weigh in on this one, if there's an RFP process or if there's a way around the RFP process, if we haven't followed one, because typically I think it's fifty thousand dollars, anything over fifty, we're supposed to go out and get three quotes on. And along those same lines, I think this is just a solution to a problem that we have. Have, have we looked at other solutions to the same problem that would um maybe divorce us from the city relationship, always being dependent there? Not that I'm asking to do that, but we are very dependent on a system that, that is in the back of the city building there. So I'm, there's have any other solutions? What's the RFP process? Are we thwarting that or do we need to reconsider this?
The, uh, this is a law firm that's purchasing, uh these guys are state contracted. And they are, and part of our policy, we have uh can't remember what you call it. It's the cooperative purchasing agent.
It's a state cooperative contract. Uh, so we are able at the state.
Yeah, so uh line ten purchases are not requiring quotes or bids. The following purchase do not require quotes or bids. Purchases made through re-approved purchasing cooperatives.
Okay.
This is a state contract.
To make a note on that, that's not a license for us to go crazy, right? Uh, very, McInnes Street is entirely open book on request from anybody within the county. We show all of our invoices, all of our costs, all of our markups. The reason that we are here is because we are already here for the city, and there's a substantial savings opportunity to go ahead and knock this out. Um, on your other uh note, uh, the solutions within the library. Uh, groundwell systems are among the most efficient well-running systems uh from a maintenance operation and longevity standpoint. These things will manage to last a hundred something years, the groundwell system itself. And it is awesome that you guys in the city have this system, first of all. There are options um that we've discussed, uh, we've discussed this internally as well. Uh, you can totally bifurcate the systems and go with the traditional boiler, chiller, or RTU system. That's gonna run you probably the same first cost as this is to replace these water source heat pumps. And the longevity of that, the lifecycle ownership cost of that is gonna be much more than if you were to reinvest in this groundless system. Um, these things are, are workforces, especially in a place like Moav. Um yeah.
If I could, I would convert the, the county building to a ground loop uh to, for the efficiency cost of it. But we don't have that infrastructure. The upfront cost would be crazy.
Well, and part of this, I already discussed in a phone call with Sean. I just wanted to get it out there for the public's benefit. I had, I, some of these, I've already had the answers to some of these questions, and I didn't want to surprise him here either. Wanted him to be prepared, but back to the statement that this is a workhorse system, how many years have we gotten out of the current system?
Twenty.
Out of the heat pumps themselves, the ground, and the ground well, the ground well's twenty years old, the heat pumps are twenty years old. Lifespan of the heat pumps is around there, uh, but the ground well is gonna last under something years if you keep the maintenance up on that.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps too. That is one that I hadn't thought to ask earlier, Sean. And then I see that Commissioner Martinez would like to ask some questions. So Brian, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just, I had a couple of questions. Um, so you said this is, this is the end-of-life units, so they were twenty-year units, is that correct?
Yes.
And both the city and the library units were purchased together?
Probably around about the same time, I assume.
Okay, and then the city had this marked in their deferred maintenance logs? Right, so this was a planned capital project for them?
The, the city, the fluid cooler um is separate from heat pumps internal to the building, and I can't, I can't speak for those heat pumps. I think they've been replaced a little bit more recently on a kind of a detail basis, but I cannot be sure.
Yeah, I, yeah, because I think, I think my question, just mostly for the commission, is, 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 um, you know, it would, it would have been nice if we would have had this, you know, budgeted for you know, these, these capital projects. I mean, I, I don't know what other capital projects we have did for, so that there's nothing really to weigh this up against.
So this, this was a kind of a last minute. Um, uh, I had, I had intended to do the three units um in the library with the eighty thousand. And then, um, but as we, as I was working on that, as we're going through our budget season, these guys were kind of coming to us and they were like, well, we can put a project together. They just didn't have the cost of the project together when we were doing our budget. Uh, and the time constraint was literally to do with the city having their project move along and of the cost savings of, of doing that in conjunction with the city uh was the, was the rush, so.
And Carrie did come and speak to us. I wanna say it was last winter-ish and said, you know, that there was a lot of projects that they needed at the library. She's made that really clear.
Yeah, anything else, else, Commissioner Martinez?
No, that's all, thanks.
And I just have one last question on another note. I, we've had meetings in one of the rooms over there where it is a huge issue that either the heat or the cooling isn't working. Is this gonna resolve that?
It's gonna resolve that. We are, we are very much outcome-focused uh with uh, with our team. Um, and one other, I think, just I wanna bring up, uh, the library is a high-performance facility. It's a diverse, superbearing environment. Um, a- as part of this, we recognize that this is also a super cool system. I'd like to engage Carrie and Meg on some sort of programming effort with kids there while we're doing this work, because I think that's a super cool opportunity to talk about the technology and kind of spread, spread kind of what's going on within the county as well. I just wanted to offer that.
Sure. And Gabe, you were about to say something.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to speak to the, the purchase po- purchasing policy, um, sort of in how this follows that. And I think Sean spoke well to, to one option where this would follow uh policy. Um, I think that Meg uh described uh some health and safety issues. Um, and we do have stipulations for an emergency purchase. Of course, you never wanna purchase this large to be considered emergency. Um, but I think it does speak to the urgency and, and, and certain language that we do have in our purchasing policy to address um pretty, you know, serious health and safety concerns. Um, and I, you, there, I guess I, I can't speak definitively, so I don't even know if I should mention it, but there, we also have stipulations for sole so- sole source provider um purchasing by passing the RFP process and, and given that McInnes Street has gone through a procurement process with the city, and they're contracted to do this work here, um, you know, we, it, it, it wouldn't necessarily you know, it would be a little, it would be interesting to, to put out to bid um to compete with a contract service already. Um, and, you know, uh, in the works, uh, offering some separate cost savings. So anyway, I just wanted to say that it did go, it did come to my desk and given all the, the, those confluence of factors, um, I felt comfortable uh with it, um, sort of follows, following policy in a, in a way that we can well explain.
And I am not one to skirt the, the process at all. I, I, I'll put RFPs out all day long. This was just a this seemed like a, a good opportunity to kind of get things smoothed out and working again, so.
Sure. Mike, in uh in making that motion for six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, uh, I do very much like uh the uh library facility to continue, but with a known twenty-year lifespan, I would really like to see it not come as a six hundred and eighty-three thousand uh random purchase. I'd like to see deferred maintenance being put. Uh I hope for more than twenty years. We know it's gonna be fifteen. And I'd like you need to be putting some in the bank when this comes up. Uh, I mean, that goes for every department, but especially.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All right, all those in favor of the HVAC system for the library? All right. All those in favor, uh, of the HVAC system for the library?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thanks, Sean. Thank you, Megan. Thank.
Thank you, Jason. You got it.
Jason, thank you. Appreciate all of your time. And we will move on to item number three. The resolution interest allocation policy, Mr. Kaufman.
So we spoke about this during the budget season last year. Um, and prior to twenty twenty-one, many of the county's funds had separate investment accounts, uh, in the Public Treasurer's Investment Fund with the state. But in twenty twenty-one, we consolidated the ma- majority of those into several pooled cash investments. The interest from those pooled cast, cash investments, uh, needs to be allocated in a reasonable and consistent manner to the various funds. Uh, so we consulted the, uh, State Auditor's Uniform Accounting Manual and what other counties are doing in this regard and came up with a. Interest allocation policy. Uh, which again, we talked about in budget season last year and, uh, got. Uh, informal approval from the commission to move forward with, uh, that policy for budgeting purposes. And now we have formal policy for you, uh, that can be, uh, discussed and, uh, potentially approved today. Uh, I don't know if anyone has any questions about how it works or, uh, going forward.
Mike, go ahead.
Uh, I move to approve the resolution interest allocation policy.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner McGann. Do we have any further discussion? Nothing in the room. Brian, do you have anything?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. I will call for a vote on the. Resolution interest allocation policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Chris, thank you. And we will move on to the next one, which is also yours, additional twenty twenty-four. Property tax abatements and cancellations.
Thank you again. So my, uh, office is responsible for administering, uh, tax relief, uh, for the county. Uh, we accept applications from individuals, uh, to receive tax relief, abatements and exemptions. Uh, I bring those to the commission for approval every year in October prior to sending out the tax bills. But then we do continue to get a few, uh, that come in after that time. And, uh, so this is just, uh, sort of cleaning up, uh, twenty twenty-four and approving, uh, any of those, uh, that came in, uh, towards the end of the year. Uh, in your packet of details, how much it is and, and what they were for. But I'm happy to entertain any questions, uh, on the abatements. Um, and before we move on, I will, one thing I will mention is we have been, uh, emailing a little bit about, uh, a bill. In the, uh, legislature SB one ninety-seven that would make some drastic changes to actually. And right now it's, uh, in the House Rules Committee and I'm hoping that it stays there. That's all I know. I haven't heard if it's, if it's gonna be moved again or not, but the title's. We're gonna be hot on that bill. Hopefully.
All right, we've got Mike.
Uh, I move to approve the additional twenty twenty-four pa- property tax abatements and cancellations as presented.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no question right after that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Hadeen. Mike?
Uh, I understand, uh, how people apply for those cancellations and abatements. Uh, why is the state giving us money? Is, is from the, from the state side, they're refunding us?
Yeah, so, um, it's a little complicated because there's a number of different programs and different criteria for, um, uh, for, uh. Being eligible. One of the programs is called Circuit Breaker. Uh, those folks have to be turning age sixty-six in the current year, also. Uh, low income underneath the, the state's income limits, various other, um, criteria that they have to meet. And, uh, that particular abatement, we for, we cancel or abate their taxes and then the state refunds those to the counties.
Okay.
Um, and that comes from the state's general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's frankly a pretty small part of the total abatements, yeah. How's it?
All right. Anyone else? Questions? Brian, any questions?
No.
All right. Seeing done, I will call for a vote on the additional twenty twenty-four property tax abatements and cancellations. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. That passes unanimously. We can move on to the next one. Looks like is the LIDAR acquisition project contractor recommended by committee for selection. Cora, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Cor Phillips. I'm the Emergency Management Director. This is the last act. As, um, I will be moving to serve as the director for the Chamber of Congress, so thank you, um, as a reminder. Uh, for the, to approve the RFP and this is the recommended selection for. The LIDAR acquisition project.
Okay, and since she's done with her presentation and before I go to Commissioner McCurdy, I would like to say that. Myself personally, and I believe all commissioners, appreciate what you've done for our emergency services, Cora. You're gonna be missed. Um, very much and I'm sure it'll be difficult for them to find somebody to fill your shoes because I know that. Especially the amount of time that Cora has put in above and beyond the normal workday and the work hours. That many of us like to get home after a hard day's work while Cora's still there and on the weekends and. So I, we understand you're moving on and moving up, or let's see, what did your email say? Marching forth on the floor. See, I remembered something. But we, we, we do appreciate everything and if anybody else wants to say anything, feel free to do so. But Cora, you, uh, you've done a good job and I've always appreciated the job that you've done.
Thank you.
Before my time.
Oh, and Mary, we're gonna.
I just wanna say, uh, you've brought this department into the twentieth century. You have done so much. I mean, it, I can't thank you enough. You've taken a burden off of a lot of people's back because now we, we have someone that really deals with emergency management and is dealing. Deal with, uh, you know, getting things in place that the person who replaces you will be very, very thankful. So we as a commission, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Cora.
All right, we'll go to Mike then.
Uh, motion to approve the contractor recommendation by the selection committee, Aero Graphics. And use in-kind contributions to meet the twenty-five percent fund match. Yeah.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner McAndless. Any further discussion? Um, I'll just say real briefly, I'm excited to see this thing move forward. I know that for our flooding and everything that goes on in this county, this will benefit the citizens, especially in the future, to be able to predict some of this and to. Uh, help our engineering department to know where we need to be moving next, so. And thank you. And so with that, if there's nobody else, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously.
No more commission meetings.
I'll stop.
Actually, she's coming next.
One more, I have.
Um, I did want to add, there is a concurrent project going on at the state level to update the flood risk map. Uh, that is a long-term project, usually takes five to seven years. Um, the whole county will be mapped with that, uh, to include Hassel Valley. Uh, the LIDAR for that was done between two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
And that is the. Preliminary information is posted on the raster dot U, or I'm not sure how, pardon me, R A S T E R dot Utah dot gov.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you for working forward in kind contributions too, so it's not cash directly out of our pocket. So, thank you.
All right, so we will let you move to the next one then, Cora, the Grand County Emergency Operations Plan, EOP Base Plan.
Yes, so. So the emergency, go, go ahead. Okay, you had it.
Uh, uh, wait.
All right.
I see your hand.
Yeah, I appreciate your, um, enthusiasm. Uh, the, so just as a reminder, the Emergency Operations Plan Base Plan is the public facing portion of the comprehensive. Operations plan that identifies the organizations and individuals who are responsible for carrying out specific actions during an emergency, explains the pertinent lines of authority and organizational relationships. And describes activities, how activities are coordinated to unify response and recovery efforts. The EOP is, or the Emergency Operations Plan is a living document continually being improved and updated as knowledge is gained through guidance, training. Exercise and coordinated emergency response activities. Uh, this plan is required, um, hospital nine six. And it is also necessary to pursue federal grant funding to support the Office of Emergency Management. So having this plan promulgated will set the next emergency manager up so they can apply for federal grants. And I'm sure it'll be a huge weight off of their shoulders. Uh, most of the rest of the plan is nearing completion, so. Please fall on the next person's court.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner McCurdy.
True fault. First, I move to approve, uh, Grand County Emergency Operations Plan Base Plan. Uh, second, oh, I can't second my own, so.
Seconded by Commissioner McGann. Go ahead, Mike.
Second part, thank you. I know it's last, last commission meeting. But this sets up the next, uh, I mean, years ahead where we were when you came in, so it's like, yeah, thank you.
You've done amazing.
Yep, anyone else? All right, I will call for a vote. All in favor? All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. Thanks again, Cora, for not just tonight, but for past. Couple of years of hard work you put into this. Yep, thank you. Okay, we will move on to number seven, which is the Resolution Red Rock Conditional Use Permit, or C. Ms. Hoffheim.
Don't have to use it anymore.
Oh, I don't have to pull this forward. You guys are good. All right.
Roll on the ceiling.
All right, um, it's, the applicant is online. Or he is here and I believe the engineer is online as well. Um. You guys have a staff report in the agenda summary. It's not gonna read it. I'm not gonna turn the screen. Fuck, um. The. The applicant is requesting approval of the conditional use permit for proposed subdivision within the water source protection overlay. Um, this is accordance with Land Use Code, section four point five. The use requested is the first step in the subdivision process that will be preliminary plat, final plat. Um, submitted after approval, if it's approved, um. The applicant's proposed subdivision will be a used by right development and, and the density will be. Think of, will be conforming with range and grazing, rural residential and MFR. Um, the site plan for the CUP depicts the subdivision proposal of forty-two dwelling units on seventy-three acres. Eighteen multi-family units and twenty-four single lot dwellings. The development within, just so we don't go down a weird rabbit, rabbit hole, the development within an MFR requires a master plan. So anything associated with that conversation would happen at preliminary plats, so I would encourage sort of. Not talking about that in this situation, um. Trail access will also be, um, addressed during the preliminary plat, uh, process. So again, I would encourage you guys to not have that part of the conversation, although. The staff report does indicate those trails as part of why we would recommend approval. Um, because it is in conformance with our general plan, if that makes sense, um. Based on applicant's compliance with state statute as well as the land use code, staff is recommending approval on this with the conditions stated in the agenda summary. And this, I'm gonna save this one, DWSPP dated July twenty twenty. Um, the proposed referral motion or the possible motion is listed on the agenda summary. One thing I would like to point out, the first staff report that was uploaded. Said that this was a legislative action. That is incorrect, it is administrative. I'm sorry, that was.
Yeah, yeah, the motion, the motion's just on exhibit one of the proposed or possible motion.
Do you guys have any copies for me before I put it up to them?
Me. Before I go.
Okay.
Uh. You went over trail access.
Hmm.
Uh, that also goes with that road access, right?
Well, so if, if according to the site plan, just so you know, the, um, it does have the steelbender trail is printed on there. Um, and that would be something that would be further discussed and. You know, wind out within the preliminary plow process. Like I said, it is, um, the applicant, we have no reason to believe the applicant won't. Um, comply with that and.
Okay, that was my one question, if anyone else has a question, but I have. I don't know how to put a motion forth or where.
Right, it's on, we'll do it.
Thanks, you, your honor.
Want to hear from you, questions?
I got stuff to do.
We can motion and then.
Sure. Let's go ahead and make the motion and then we'll open it up if anybody has questions for.
Okay, so I move to adopt the findings of fact from the staff report dated February twenty fifth, twenty twenty-five for the Red Rock Development Water Source Protection Overlay. Conditional use permit in connection to development plan for the Grand County Parcel. Number S zero two dash zero zero one four dash zero zero one three. And zero two dash zero zero one four dash zero zero one eight. As well as zero two dash zero zero one four dash zero zero two zero as illustrated on the site plan dated December twenty second, twenty twenty-three. With the following conditions in order to mitigate responsibly anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use. The development and operation of the subdivision shall strictly adhere to, number one, the drinking water source protection plan dated July twenty twenty-four. Number two, the drainage report dated July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Number three, the protective covenants referenced in the plan documents, which covenants shall be recorded against the property at the time of subdivision. Number four, the conditions listed in chapter six of the DWSPP. Management Program for Unseen Future Contamination Sources and also outlined below. Do I need to read the rest of it? Is that all? Keep going. Okay. Proposed DWSPP conditions to meet the purpose of the WSPO district, applicant agrees to the following conditions. Number one, provide sewer service to all lots with all sewer mains, manholes and laterals to be constructed in accordance with Utah Administrative Rule R three zero nine dash five one five dash six. Two, to provide a stormwater system that will capture as much runoff from roads and driveway, driveways as poss- reasonably possible. And provide water quality treatment to reasonably remove hydrocarbons and other potentially hazardous compounds from the storm runoff. Three, the final engineering plan should include a construction stormwater pollution prevention plan and construction housekeeping practices plan. Number four, provide stormwater quality measures in the subdivision, mitigate the concentration and infiltration of contaminants. Storm drainage design will include natural drainage walls and channels, a detention pond with an impermeable liner. And filter media with underdrain and oil capturing vault. Number five, require that lots not draining to regional detention and water quality facility provided individual detention. And water quality for all impermeable area that have been constructed. Number six, require the all storm drainage improvements to be created in Grand County prior to commencement of construction on any lot. Missions one, six, shall be addressed as part of the required engineering plans for the subdivision to be submitted and approved prior to final plat. And the redoubled number seven as well, okay. Seven is protective covenants will be adopted for the entire development that specifically. A, require manual weed maintenance and prohibit the use of household herbicides, pesticides. And fertilizers with an explanation about the water source protection issue. B, prohibit de-icing salts and chemicals on roads and lots. C, prohibit car washing and car maintenance repair on roads and lots. D, prohibit home occupations which create new potential contaminant sources. E, require the HOA to host an annual hazardous waste materials cleanup.
F, prohibit the keeping of any livestock animals or allow animal intensive uses such as boarding or breeding establishments. G, prohibit the use of wastewater treatment, including underground septic systems, leach fields, and lagoons. H, provide for the ongoing maintenance and repair of all stormwater systems associated with the development. And I establish and provide for enforcement of construction housekeeping best practices adhered to by all lot owners via protective covenants, a copy of which will be submitted with a preliminary plat application. J, prohibit underground injection wells in accordance with Utah Underground Injection Control Program. K, prohibit gray water systems for outside irrigation. L, require pool drains and backwash to be constructed in compliance with the Utah sanitary sewer regulations so that pool water is drained directly into the sanitary sewer rather than discharged into the subdivision stormwater system. M, prohibit the onsite storage of chemicals used for pool maintenance and require that lots not draining to regional detention and water quality facility providing visual detention and water quality for all permeable areas that have been constructed on the lot.
On this motion, I can remember.
I thought you didn't read that, no? Good job.
Two.
All right.
I was like, no, I don't.
Candace seconded by Commissioner. Do we have any other thoughts? Anybody want to?
I mean, we had this long list of things that we're gonna do to protect our water source. So let me just kind of reiterate. This protects, and this is in quotes, current and future public culinary water supplies to Grand County. Hopefully, people understand that's the main springs specifically for the city of Moab. Make that clear. This is the EPA is single source aquifer and protecting that aquifer. And so when I look at this long list, this is all great. It looks really good. Who's gonna do that? Who's gonna be monitoring if somebody's washing their car? Right, like, I assume this is via an H O A. Is, is that correct?
It was mostly through the H O A. That, that specific would be, um, administered through the H O A.
Right, right. I'm not, I'm not harassing you. I'm making, I'm, I'm making, trying to make a point. I'm, I'm gonna lose. It doesn't matter, but I'm trying to make a point, right? How, how important those springs are for this valley? And that we protect those springs. And we put all these things on paper. But how do we really institute them? Even C U Ps, all the conditions that we put in place, we know that we don't, it's just like, what's the point? Not to be rude unless somebody really challenges them, which I appreciate when people do challenge them because we put them on paper and we should enforce them. And so.
I believe that we did approve a position under Bill Hulse to start doing some of this exactly contained, so.
We're having a harder time filling positions.
Yeah.
I am right. I appreciate that because you know, that, that's the goal is that the C U Ps are now starting to come at us fast and furious and it's like, how do we have all these conditions and in theory, we're supposed to be revisiting them yearly? Is that correct? And so that's the whole, right? Um, you know, this one's really concerning to me in the sense of its location, specifically, I mean, the chemicals and all of that, that's one thing, but there's no way they're gonna mitigate stormwater. If, if, if anybody was out and about this last summer, there's no retention ponds gonna, gonna slow down some of that water and you're, you know. And, and that's the big thing that Dan has spoken to and Bill Jackson has spoken to these developers. When you're putting all these ponds in place, they have to maintain them. They have to be cleaned out now just constantly. I know, you know, so just, I'm just, since the developer's here, I'm making sure that you're hearing me. You have to clean out those ponds. That infiltration of that sediment is, we can't have it in our, in our, this is our water system, our culinary water system. It's not mine, but it's the city of Moab. Um, so, so I'm just making a point again. I'm gonna lose. I'm all good with that. I, you know, knew that going in, but I'm just making a point about C U Ps in general and that the county really has to get into a place where if we're, we're, we have these C U Ps, we're gonna retain them, we need to be able to enforce them.
Thank you for that. Yes, Mr. Stocks.
Just note again, as, as commissioners are likely well aware of, uh, when we have C U Ps, they're generally assumed that if they and meet the conditions that they will be, uh, approved. Uh, land use authority shall approve conditional use permit if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards. That's what we have here. Those things are met. Um, I'll say that for the, for this application, those things are met. They are addressed. They don't have to be eliminated, uh, and there's some restrictions. Um, every time the C U Ps come up, I, I make the same pitch to the commissioners. Um, that the commission may, if they want, uh, we'll get how and where we have C U Ps, where we don't have C U Ps, we could go to approved uses and not, um, I, I say each time because I think it's something that the, the commission should consider, but when we view this application, I think that the items that were listed out are within the standards that we've set. They comply with those standards, and I, I do not believe that the county or the commission has, uh, it would have a strong, uh, likelihood of success.
I understand that. I'm perfectly aware of that.
Just one more quick point. Um, this is a, this was a two-year-long process going back and forth between city engineer, county engineer, and it was Dave Dillman not, uh, right. Yeah, this was, um, this has gone back and forth quite a bit, um. They went through, I believe, four D R Ts on this one specifically where engineers and county staff really dug in with the applicant on, um, making sure that these things were, were done correctly.
Yes.
Yeah, I was thinking, as I was reading those two pages, that I had read them earlier, but they, um, did a really good job of listing all those things and what a great role model for some other areas because when I should look at that water, um, shed, we're gonna have a lot more C U Ps. I mean, if people wanna build in our community, they're gonna have to come across for C U Ps because they wanna build on the watershed. So I really was impressed with the work that was done, and I think that's a great role model, and I do agree with Trish about enforcement, but I think that um, hopefully the developer does, does understand how important a water is. I'm sure that they do, because it would affect their development as well, but um, to all those things to protect the water.
Sure, yeah.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I did. I went out and did another site visit, uh, this morning on my bike, just check out the terrain out there. It's pretty interesting terrain that, uh, it's being proposed to be built on. Um, I appreciate everything, everything that, uh, that Trish has brought up and, uh, develop storm drainage. Um, that'll be definitely, but hope that happens and works out.
Mary, go ahead.
It just concerns me a great deal. I think it's like, oh, this. I mean, our water is so, it's our goal. I hope we really get around to looking at C U Ps really limit. If I hear what Stephen says, this is an administrative decision. I understand that. But it doesn't make me happy. And, you know, I think we we need to really look our C U Ps, and I don't want anything above on our watershed in the future. I want any C U P that is going to have development on top of our aquifer eliminated.
I will, um, just comment to that, Mary, but that watershed protection district is basically everything. We're, we're gonna see these whether we like it or not over the watershed, and I, I think that to Melody's point, they've done a great job in addressing this. I, I agree it's gonna be a challenge where it's located. We, most of us, I think, all know that location pretty well, but, um, we'll have to see how they do here, and I do know the importance of filling that position under Bill Hulse over there also, because it isn't just this development. It's literally all past developments and anything into the future. We really need to be working hard to make sure that they all, that their storm drain systems are working. So I don't have anything else. Mike, did you have something?
Oh, I would allow Commissioner Martinez if he didn't participate, but if not, can we call for a vote?
I haven't seen his hand up at all, so I think we're.
I'm all good, Mike.
All right, so we have the motion by Commissioner McCandless, and I'm not sure was it, it was Mike McCurdy. Okay, Commissioner McCurdy that seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
I'm just making a point.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a protest. It's not a, that's right.
That passes with two opposed, Commissioner Hadeen and Commissioner McGann making a point, and we appreciate that. Okay, thank you. And yes, we are now at our six o'clock citizens to be heard portion of this meeting. I will ask if we've got anybody in the chambers that would like to come forward. But do you know visitors? All right, how about online? When do we see anybody that wants to weigh in?
Don't raise, raise your hand if you're online.
I don't, don't see anybody stepping up. We've got it. All right, so we will move on from our second citizens to be heard, and I will let this go back over to Doc Hadler for the Thompson Springs Fire.
Great, thank you, Bill. And, um, so we are coming out of recess on the T S S D, uh, T S S S F D regular meeting, uh, today, March fourth, it's, uh, six oh one. And, uh, we, I opened a public hearing two hours ago into the dissolution of Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. Uh, we didn't have any comment at that time. I would ask if there's any comments now on that further issue, uh, before I close the public here. Actually, is, is there any, uh, is there any comments on that? It's like not in the room. And I can't see any online. So next, uh, generally we keep these public hearings open for a week, and then we vote on them at the next meeting. But it has been recommended that we suspend our regular, um, procedure in order to take a vote on this. Today, I believe that a suspension of, uh, uh, procedure requires a, uh, uh, super majority, correct, Stephen?
Two or five, yes, correct, okay. Uh, you, you're missing one, so it's still.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and vote on this receiving.
All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner McGann, a second by Commissioner McCurdy, suspend the rules and vote on this, uh, this evening. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Hadeen absent. Um, so we will now call for a vote on the dissolution of Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. And that is, uh, do I need anything else on that?
There's a resolution there.
Okay, should I read the whole resolution? Yes, okay. And it doesn't have a number yet.
It'll be numbered after it's passed.
It'll number after it's passed. Okay, great. Uh, so resolution dissolving Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District, whereas the Grand County Commission is authorized under statute or under, uh, section seventeen D dash one dash six oh one to approve the dissolution of the Special Service Fire District. Whereas the Bottom Valley Fire Protection District is, uh, signed a resolution complying with Utah Code section sixty-seven dash one A dash six point five on November eighth, twenty twenty-four, which incorporates Thompson Springs into its coverage area. Whereas the Lieutenant Governor of the State of Utah signed a certificate of annexation dated January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas none of the limitations for dissolving the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District as outlined in section seventeen D dash one dash six oh two exist, which might otherwise preclude the Grand County Commission from dissolving said district. Whereas the Grand County Commission, finding no further advantage maintaining the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District desires now to dissolve it and transfer its assets, funds as outlined in the I O A approved at the December twenty twenty-four meetings. Now, therefore, via resolved, the Grand County Commission, under the authority of section seventeen D dash one dash six zero one at sec, um, does hereby dissolve the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. Proper notices and documents shall be filed with Lieutenant Governor of the State of Utah in the office of the Grand County Recorder as outlined in Utah Code section seventeen D dash one dash six oh three. This resolution was duly and regularly introduced and passed by a vote at a regular meeting of the Grand County Commission, State of Utah on the fourth day of March twenty twenty-five, or we hope to be, or expect it will be, um, Grand County Commission. All right, Mike?
Guys, we still need a motion with that.
Yes, correct.
I'd like to make a mo- the motion, uh, resolution number. Have that yet? Uh, resolution dissolving the Thompson Special Springs Service Springs Special Service Fire District as read by Commissioner Hadler.
To pass that, to pass that, okay. Thank you. And so I have a motion on the table from Commissioner McCurdy and a second from Commissioner McGann. Uh, any further discussion? This has been a very long time coming, and, uh, we, we, we're finally here. So, uh, I applaud everyone who's participated in this. I know I've been to a couple of meetings that have been anywhere close to as much work as, as many other folks, including those over at the Fire District and a couple of my fellow commissioners and and, and, and everybody else. So, thank you. Anybody else have a comment or?
Um, I'd like to, if possible, I'd just like to thank a couple of people that aren't here anymore because they really moved this forward. Chris Barrett and, uh, Kevin Walker. They were both, did a kind of work on it. So, thank you both.
And I had, I had Mallory now, so I had to Mallory.
Yes.
Consider a lot of the heavy lifting on this as well.
Catch the team with the M O U.
Sorry.
We had to pass the M O U.
The, the previous M O U that we passed in? Yeah, we, we, we passed the, yeah, right, okay, the I L A.
I think we had, we didn't have, I meant, we didn't have to update it.
Okay, the, the, the last item, the last item that we'll do, if this passes now, then we'll ask to take a recess, have the final minutes drafted, and then come back, approve the minutes, and then close out the meeting so that there will be minutes for the final meeting. Does that make sense?
Okay, I will. So motion was made by Commissioner McCurdy, a second from Commissioner McGann. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, and the motion passes unanimously. Um, so I will call for a recess now, um, and we will compile, or I assume, uh, gave, we'll compile the final minutes from this particular, uh, meeting. We can uh, approve those final minutes and then close this meeting, and then we will never again open. So I will call for a quick recess. Let's, uh, what time is it? It's six, six oh seven. Let's come back in about six, twelve. Sure, okay. Thank you. Sure. Okay. Thank you.
So how long did we have?
Resolution, we didn't have to read the whole thing. I'm just curious, what's the difference?
Don't even. The, I think the other one was a dissolution.
Okay, cuz it was a dissolution. Okay, just checking. Good question. I know, I'm like, I don't wanna read it, but.
Well, it's great.
Well, and and the one, the one that you read was findings for the.
I read the findings, yeah, but Jacques read the dissolution. So it was a red, it was a new resolution, but I wasn't. Was checking.
Okay, that one passes unanimously. We will move on to number nine, the resolution, release of warranty bond and acceptance of subdivision improvements. Associated with J and M subdivision, Dan Stem to the county engineer is on with us.
Hello all, um. So this was a small two lot, just a lot split, two lot subdivision located on San Jose Drive. I didn't bring a picture of it, but I don't think we really need it. The improvements consisted of widening the pavement by four feet. Along the frontage, adding a second utility service for the second lot, so sewer and water hookup for the second lot. And doing some gravel shouldering. That was the extent of them. I think the total value of the improvements was around ten thousand dollars. But um made the applicant bond, I did a final inspection. Just over a year ago, signed off on it. Bill Jackson was involved in that as well. And the warranty period started and they just. Ended past their warranty period. So at this point, this resolution is basically. Relieving them of the bond requirement to hold a warranty and the county is taking over. That four foot strip of pavement for maintenance purposes.
All right, thank you, Dan. Mike, go ahead.
Like to make a motion. Approving, accepting the resolution, approving the final acceptance of the required subdivision improvements associated with the J and M subdivision. Do I need to go down the list?
Sorry. I had to catch. You, can you say that again? I'm sorry.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion.
No, you don't have to. Okay.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Hadler. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. We will move on to. Number ten, the county commission's support or opposition to. SB one five four, SB one nine seven, SB two zero three, SB two zero four, HB four five one and HB five four zero. And I believe this one is Commissioner Hadeen.
Yeah.
Oh, Commissioner Ab.
Yeah, and this one, sure, I'll, I'll, I'll take it. But this, this kinda came out of our discussions in the legislative committee. And uh, I, I'll actually, I'll, I'll explain it. I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion, actually. I'll move to support HB five forty and I'll move to oppose SB one fifty four, SB. One ninety seven, SB two oh three, SB two oh four and HB four fifty one, although I believe HB fourteen fifty one has already been. It uh, is, is no longer uh, viable. Um, and I'll explain, so we did, we did talk about various bills in our committee, uh, I believe. That the county attorney brought a number of these to our attention. Uh, as the state bar was opposed to a few of them and those particular ones were SB one thirty four. Uh, two oh three, two oh four, as well as HB four fifty one. And then our treasurer uh, has, has repeatedly brought up SB one ninety seven is one. He uh opposes and he agreed with all of those. In our legislative committee meeting and then HB five forty just came up. Last week, uh, Melody and I had a conversation about this and we also discussed it. On Monday, uh, and this generally would, would kinda go forward to severely limit the former municipality. Efforts across the state. It wouldn't do anything to retroactively affect our particular one, uh, the Kingsbury's one, but it, but it would go forward to. The curtails of that and, and others in the state in the future. Uh, so. Uh, kinda that's where we're at with that. And again, we. I'll say it's a little, our. It's a little cumbersome, our, our methods, because we do. It's, it's a little hard. The state let the legislative session move so quickly and, and we talk about these on Monday mornings. We, we circle up with our. Uh lobbyist Cody on these and we discuss them, but then by the time we can actually bring him. To the general commission to vote on, uh, some of them, it's, it's, it's already, it's already passed. They, they either passed or been circled or, or just. Uh, gone away. So, so we're kinda moving at a much slower speed in the legislative session, unfortunately. But it is, I, I think these are all ones that we, we agree on and going forward, I think. Before the next legislative session next year, we can have further conversations about how we might be more effective in our. Uh, support or opposition bills. So anyway, that's my long-winded uh, presentation.
And that's good. I'll, I'll update real quick on the HB five forty. I watched that one um, go out of the committee. Um, I, it wasn't unanimous. I think it had one no, but it's moving forward.
Right, great.
So it, I believe from there it goes to. The Senate, right?
Yes.
So I, I'd have to go back and look at it. It, it is still moving forward at least, whereas the other one, I don't remember the number you mentioned. Four fifty one, I think that's dead.
Four fifty one was dead, yeah.
All right, Mike.
I made a motion with this.
I did make a motion, yes.
I was seconding it.
No, no.
Two part, I'd like to second that. We just started talking. Uh, two. This is another outcry. This is the best area. To participate through UAC in policy steering committees. And uh, to, even if the subject is not, or the bill is not being talked about, you as an elected official, every elected official. Can raise it within those policy steering committees. Uh, and make it a point, UAC. Carries a bigger stick than just one county. And point their vision and point uh, your opinion a little higher, so.
All right, motion by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. Any further?
No, I was just gonna, yeah, I talked to Jacques about this this morning and, and just said. And he, he's already stated this, but I think next year we have to look at. Modifying this process somehow, even if it's just that. You know, the support and or um.
Opposition.
Opposition of these bills can be put in in the, you know, I know if we need twenty-four hour notice, right? Because some, I mean, there's bills being floated right now that are way more detrimental. So I mean, there's some right now that are. Right, you know that. And so, you know, just during that, during that legislative session, if we can modify kind of the process of being able to amend the agenda a little bit. That's all.
Sure, Melody.
Well, I'll just put it out there. At ten o'clock on Thursday, you know, get your phone out, you can vote. You can hop online on Zoom. They're gonna, they are gonna go through so many bills on Thursday with UAC at ten o'clock, so. I know, I'm like, I'm, I'm, yeah, you know, hop online there. It's been, I've, I've learned so much just being able to be part of all of these policy steering committees. Um, in the last five weeks and so I, I really feel like it, it does make a difference. It's crazy. And, and, and I. And you have counties that talk about one, other counties oppose it, and then it goes back and forth, you know, so you have really good discussion on those policy steering committee meetings, as well as the legislative meeting that's on Thursday, but. I, I, maybe with the subcommittee, we could share our Google notes. I mean, you know, we have a Google Doc that, that Cody's been updating and that we've all been updating every meeting and so. You know, maybe we just open that up to, you know, we're meeting, but we just could open it up so you guys go in there and look at it and see what we have been discussing during that. I don't. You know, I don't, I don't know the best way, but it was really good for all of us this year, but you guys have just.
I will get that real good.
In the loop, so.
Maybe, maybe we could add before the legislative session at one of the final meetings in December, we could circle back and. Have with Cody especially and just have a general discussion about um. Going forward with twenty twenty six.
Yeah, definitely. I, I would say. That in previous years with my work, that the Thursday meeting at ten o'clock has been the most important time. And I would say that it's still very important, but honestly, that I get more out of the policy steering committees and there's a broader discussion on the bill. Sometimes it's very, very limited quick on Thursday cuz they're going over such a big list of them that. I, I've kinda readjusted to where I, I get a lot more benefit out of the steering committees, but both of them are important. Mike, go ahead.
Uh, again, just speaking to the policy steering committees. We all don't have the same opinion up here. And that is where it is openly expressed and. Talk about and explore is those policy steering committees and taking part in that. Uh, if, if you have a differing opinion than the total of uh, Grand County, you are more than welcome to. Say it during those policy steering committees as an elected official. I may not have the same. Uh, ideas or policy decisions or bill decisions as uh, County Attorney Stephen Stox. Uh, but uh, his view is just as valued as uh, another commissioner being an elected official there. So. Participate, participate, participate.
All right, Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, just to echo uh, what you guys are talking about, those policy steering committees. I mean, they've been invaluable for me to. To get in and start to be able to learn what's actually happening in these bills and catch some different opinions. Yeah, I, I, I think they're fantastic.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. Do you wanna reread the one that you oppose and support, Jac? Because I wasn't taking quick enough notes.
Yes, uh, opposed to SB one fifty four, one ninety seven, two oh three, two oh four, as well as HB five forty one, which is kind of the moot. Point and then support HB five.
Okay, and that was seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. So is there any further discussion?
I'd just uh, like to thank the commission for having an opportunity to weigh in. Uh, for my, my position, I think that there are some bills that are. Um, concerning, eh, from an attorney standpoint or judiciary standpoint. And I appreciate the commissioners for considering um, my opinion and helping support that. So, thank you.
All right, nothing further. I'll call for a vote. All in support of the motion?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We will move on to number eleven, the resolution creating a social media policy. See, we got your melody, make it away.
I know, we just, we discussed it last meeting and now there's been no changes to it. Um, just have a vote to put it into effect as is. So, Mike.
Mike? I move to approve the resolution to establish a social media policy.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Hadler. Actually, I think you beat your melody.
Oh, that's fine.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess I just need. Um, Steven to help me with some legalies if possible. So I'm just making sure that it's like section three scope. That there's, it says exclusions, county personnel and elected officials in their personal private capacity. So basically, we can have our own social media accounts.
Yes. Definitely. The one, the one thing that I've, and I've noted this in the past, if you, if you have a private account. If you have a, e- even if you have a campaign account, so let's, let's go in the hypothetical with it. You have a, a campaign account, private account and then a county commission account. You want to delineate between the three of those because they're going to mean different things. Personal account, you might say this is uh, Stephen Stox's and, and in fact, mine does say that. This is my personally, my account, don't contact me for business issues. And I put that out there. This is not a county account. If it's your campaign account, you might delineate that. Hey, this is my campaign account with four, forward-looking statements. That, you know, if you're in the midst of running a campaign, you're not saying, like if. If you're a commissioner and running a campaign, it's important to delineate that. And if it's a commissioner. Uh, if you guys, and when I haven't, I don't know that anybody has a commissioner county account. If you had one of those, again, it's separating those out. There was a case back east, I wanna say Maine, that there was a city manager that was utilizing his. Uh, personal account to make comments about ongoings at the city. He was a city manager. And somebody spoke critically of him, and so he blocked him and the court made him unblock him. Because it was a question of access to government and transparency. So the reason why I just stress that, yes, you can have those accounts, but it's really. It's just a huge benefit for you cuz. We don't want grandma on your guys' Facebook accounts, and so you just take it and say. This is not for the county use, or this is my campaign account for forward-looking thoughts and just kind of. Put them in three different boxes so that no one gets confused.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
And, and the. Just one other thought. I mean, the, the big, the, these things are starting to evolve more and more. Um, you know, President Trump's what, had one case where he blocked somebody, that case went off. And then that other, we're gonna see more of these cases over time, uh, but the more you can, again, as I said, the more you can distance. That account from official government county uh, things. And I think one thing that's unique and kind of difficult at times. Folks look to commissioners because we don't have kind of a public policy person or a PR person or somebody that speaks for the county. So somebody might come to you and say, oh, Commissioner McCurdy, I don't know about these special events for a minute process on your personal account. Maybe they post it on your page and you respond on your page. Oh, this is how to do it. Well, uh-oh, are you acting as your county capacity or not? And so it's important to kind of make sure you guys are some of the most knowledgeable people in the county about government, about the county government. People will look to you for that help. So as much as you can, if you make some post on your page or somebody else's page, they may look at you like that. And so. You can sometimes use the phrase, this is not the opinion of the, of the commission. This is my personal opinion. And so delineate that and explain that. That really helps and avoids, you know, people that are critical of us may, may say, oh, well. I think that they meant to speak on behalf of the government, things like that. So just an ounce of caution, social media is uh. Uh, wonder, I, I'm not a huge fan, but it's a wonderful tool, but it's also can create a lot of headache and extra work for everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, Commissioner McCurdy made the motion, Commissioner Hadler seconded that. I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. We will move on to the designation of zoning administrator. This is coming from the commission administration.
And Dan's also here.
And Dan's also here as well.
And I can help with the, the discussion. So we, we need to have a zoning administrator. That's an important piece to have. Um, Dan Stent is acting in that role. In the past, we've looked to uh, Elisa Martin stayed on when she departed county for a bit of time. Um, then we had Ms. Weiser and now we've got Dan. It's really important to have somebody that's in that role, that's educated about these things, knowledgeable about these things. I think Chrissy Hoffine um, has the ability to do that. I know in the past Quinn Hall has also served in that position. Um, it may be, you know, admittedly. Uh, it may make, um, he has served in that position, even though you might say, you said, and say he doesn't want to anymore. Um, it, it may uh, be difficult at times for my office because if there's a decision made, basically, we might give it to Warren for him to review instead of. Out of the optics and transparency issue. Uh, but I do think Chrissy's well uh, able and suited to, to handle this, this position. Um, she's also helping fill in. I think that department is doing the best that it can right now, but there's a lot of change and a lot of shifting and as much stability that we can have. Um, I, I, I think that would be a, a good thing to do for the, for that office. Those are my two cents. And if I've missed anything, Quinn can correct me or Mark. Or anyone else.
Commissioner McCurdy.
I move to approve uh, Kristen Hoffine as the temporary zoning administrator beginning March seventh, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Okay.
And, and Dan is unmuted, but I don't know if he wants to speak.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner McGann. I think she beat you, Melody. Um, Dan. You're welcome to speak to this if there's anything you'd like.
Um, not particularly unless you have specific questions. Um. I, I did um, put out an email and suggested Chrissy um, for this role. To the admin, so I. Yeah, I, I think that she's the most logical candidate right now. I will say. The, and I don't know exactly how it's gonna work with her, but having all the, the, the open planning emails that just come to the planning department, like forwarded to me. It's been a little bit eye-opening and just the volume of those that, that come through and the issues. And, and the questions that come up that you kinda have to make sure you don't just. Give a quick answer to that's gonna bite us later. Um. That's been a little bit more than, than I anticipated time-wise, so. But um, Steven's your boss, so if he's championing it, he's, he's gonna just. Lose um, her time on other things.
And, and we, and I hinted at this previously, we did interview for a candidate for the flex, the, the. Flexible paralegal, um, and they're like a very optimistic candidate. We believe there's an optimistic candidate. Chrissy's found additional time. Um, for the commission, full disclosure for the commission, she is getting additional hourly hours at a rate that's uh, appropriate. For that, um, if you think it's something that she can handle, I indicated to her that if she needed to take time off from my work. That's something that we can work out or uh, have additional help. Um, but she's expressed a willingness and a desire to do it. So. I do think it would be really. Really good for the county to move forward before we're defining a, a replacement. For the, the vacancy and that actor position. Cuz more things are coming. And, and Dan, just shout out to Dan. Dan's been instrumental in his uh, lift and completing some major applications. You know, this week, among other things that have been uh, critical, but for his. His willingness to stay on and help, I think the county would be uh. Substantially a huge loss of help.
Well, I'd like to also speak out. I know, I don't know how long Dan's been with us. It feels like. It's very recent, but I know he's got a couple of years here under his belt, but he's been a huge, huge benefit to the county and having his services here and. To. I, I, you know, it's gonna be hard to replace him. Even with, if it were somebody more qualified, Dan has such an institutional knowledge of our. Entire valley and county here and it's, it's gonna be a. A hard, hard to replace you, Dan, so. Thank you for your service and all the help that you've given me and others.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's it.
Chairman Commission, I would like to. Personally thank our county attorney for allowing Ms. Hoffine to form those duties. It's desperately needed at this time, especially with Dan departing and we appreciate all Dan has done. Uh, for us, but also appreciate Chrissy willingly serving that capacity. It's a. Gigantic help for, for admin and, and which is appreciated that department.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner McGann. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian, and that passes unanimously. We will move on to number thirteen. A letter to Utah State Representatives and Senators Regarding Public Lands and Public Land Managers. Commissioner Hadeen.
Yeah, I'm gonna, if, if it's okay, I'm gonna read a little thing that I put together and then the letter if possible. So our public lands are an invaluable resource, not held by many nations of the world. Two-thirds of our original one point eight billion acres held in the public domain have already been transferred to individuals via the Homestead Acts. Corporations via railroads and wagon roads and states via land grants. The US Forest Service established in eighteen ninety one conserves over a hundred and sixty million acres. The National Park Service established in nineteen sixteen manages over twenty million acres. The National Wildlife Refuge System established in nineteen forty manages over twenty-six million acres and the Bureau of Land Management. Established in nineteen forty-six manages land in twelve western states and sixty grazing districts. Not to forget our national monuments and wilderness areas are all, as, and others. From Ulysses S. Grant, who protected our first national park, which is Yellowstone, to Theodore Roosevelt, who designated. An impressive two hundred and fifty million acres of public lands to Alda Leopold, who in nineteen twenty-four designated the world's first wilderness, the Gila. We have been left a legacy to protect for generations to come, our land managers, our stewards of these lands, and this letter represents our support of public lands. And land managers. And so then the letter. Um, the public lands of Grand County are a treasure and an incredible resource for the state of Utah and the United States, as well as the. Management of visit, or sorry, a magnet for visitors worldwide. We are blessed with the unique landscapes created through eons of geological processes, which include canyons filled. With flora, fauna, ancestral ruins and endless mazes for exploration. It also consists of the second highest mountain range in Utah, two national parks, one national forest, the beautiful river corridors, to name a few. Our community is defined not only by our people, but also by the iconic lands that surround us. Approximately eighty-seven percent of Grand County comprises public lands managed by state and federal agencies. The value of these lands range from livestock raising to mineral extraction, gas and oil production. And our most significant industry and economic driver, recreation-based tourism. The US Department of Commerce's Bureau of Economic Analysis data from two thousand and twenty-three show that are the outdoor recreation. Industry significantly impacts our economy, contributing nine point five billion compared to eight point one billion in two thousand and twenty-two. Outdoor rec now contributes three point four percent of Utah's GDP. Grand County has an ever burgeoning dependence on our public lands for recreational opportunities. As the dominant industry, tourism contributes a substantial proportion of revenue towards providing local government in services. Increased sales tax, commercial property taxes, transient room taxes and employment have contributed to a higher quality of life. And more prosperity in the Moab area. Headwater, Headwaters Economics states that today, more than a third of the families have a member that works in tourism. And recreation business related to the public lands and nearly two-thirds of the residents indicate that public lands are critical to their businesses. We implore our representatives to acknowledge the tremendous value that public lands provide to our communities' economic, social and ecological welfare. Even more importantly, we hope our representatives understand the value of the people who have dedicated their lives to managing, protecting, promoting and sustaining this invaluable resource. Those individuals who recently lost jobs at agencies, whose mission is to manage and protect these lands for the benefit of all Americans. Are of a great concern for our community. They play a key role in maintaining the already strained infrastructure of our Keystone industry. They are friends, family, neighbors. And one of the many pieces of fabric that make us who we are. We hope you acknowledge and support the tremendous value that public lands and our public land managers bring to our state. Thank you for recognizing our concerns. And the hope is that when uh, our commissioners go back to DC, they will take this letter with them.
Okay. Mary?
I'll make a motion to accept the letter to the Utah State Representatives and Senators Regarding Public Lands and Public Land Managers.
Okay, Commissioner McGann makes the motion and Commissioner Hadler seconds it. So any further discussion? Jacques?
Yeah, I think the, the. Point with this is just to, you know, is just to let. Our, and actually first I wanna say that I think the, I think that the title in the um. Is, is, is misrepresented of kinda who these uh, this letter is intended for. It's not to the Utah State Representatives and Senators, more towards our federal delegation.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, and actually I, I brought that up previously. It just didn't get changed. No big deal. Um. But I, I just wanted to make that, that point. And I, and I think the main point of the letter is just, you know, these are, I think, I think our, our, our. Congressional representatives. We, we as their constituents and especially as a, as a, as a smaller government entity. Uh, it's important for us to, to make them aware of concerns. Of which they um, you know, have, have some ability to act on or. Or whatever, at least, at least acknowledge. And, and understand how some of the actions that are going on right now affect constituents. So not, I mean, this letter isn't to scold or to, to do anything, but just, just let them know. That these actions are affecting uh, their constituents. And, and I think presenting so in a, in a, in a polite and concise manner. Is a good medium for delivery, so um. Be honored to, to help present this.
Sure, Commissioner McCurdy?
I don't think you're mean enough.
Well, I was trying to, I, I've tried to provide some balance, Mike.
I, well, I understand the balance. Uh, I would have liked to see. I would have liked to see a little more pointed wording, uh, the. I would have liked, one, to participate, two. Uh, I would have liked to see more pointed wording, uh, to direct impact. Direct impact facts to Grand County. I know most are congressional. I know most of federal don't know where Grand County is. I understand that. But I'd like, I would have liked to seen. More pointed wording. I mean, to make it short, I would have liked it to a little harsher.
I did try to concentrate on the economic impacts of the economy, what recreation brings to our economy.
Understand.
Commissioner Martinez? Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, I I I also think that uh um, I don't think there's anybody who was uh uh at the dais there that. That would disagree with with the intent of this letter right here. Um, but I think that everybody would have enjoyed to have or uh would have liked to participate. Uh, just a couple of my comments, when reading through it, um, I mean, I was almost lost by the time I got to the end. Um, the point is not made at the, at the beginning of what we're actually talking about, um, the three paragraphs of history kind of coming into it. Um, you lose the idea of what we're saying, so without.
That wasn't part of the letter. That was just me talking.
I I know, but even, I know, I I I read, I read your letter, you know, in the letter as well, you know, not mentioning the people that it's hurting. Right at the beginning of that letter, right? I think is 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 we're definitely missing out on the point.
Well, we will have to hope that Jacques and yourself and Commissioner McCurdy can. Bring that to the forefront of it when they're back in DC. I, I um, real quick, we'll also point to the fact that it does mention the social. And the economic, and I appreciate the economic because we have had some pretty heated discussions amongst commissioners here. As to some of the difference of opinion where some of that economic. Has come from and and why it's here. So I I appreciate pointing that out as well and. Just just moving forward, I think it's important that we try and get our community back to a place to where. All enjoying just a little bit of positive growth here. So on that point, um, Mike, you had another comment.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Um, anyone else?
Yeah, if the commission, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Brian.
Oh, no, just, you know, and and then another thing as well, it it would be nice as well to add some of the comments that Cara had brought up earlier today. And our citizens to be heard, um, you know, just about a couple of the offices.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that shouldn't be something that all, I'll, I'll kind of dive into that tomorrow, Brian. Um, because I do think it's something separate that both the city and the county should acknowledge as soon as possible. And so I was gonna kind of dive into that tomorrow, and I'll send out an email to folks, see what we can do.
Okay, Mr. Stock.
I I was just gonna note, I mean, if you guys had some, you know, edits, you guys could make the, you know, if you want to touch up the language or change it. I mean, you guys, you could, um, I mean, you guys can agree to have, you know, Commissioner Dean and Commissioner Curry work on it and do it that way. But that's your guys' call. I didn't want you guys to think the only option is, this is it.
When are you going to DC?
Next week. Go ahead, Jacques.
Yeah, I I think um, I I think we can definitely get into the weeds. I think, I think presenting the letter and and having three of us there to to. Provide some context and and discussion, I think is probably the way to go, is is all three of us have have diff, you know, we we've come from. Actually, Brian and I come from very similar industries here. We both run editors for for a long time, but um. But uh, yeah, having some, having some different viewpoints, just just letting our representatives know exactly how it's affecting different segments of our, of our. Economy as well as our uh, community here is 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 probably more impactful than than anything that the the letters can say.
Yeah, impacting lives, you know. Alright, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion. Remind me.
Again, I may.
Yeah, okay, a motion. Can we still talk about it?
I made it.
We we have, and yeah, we usually make the motions and then have the discussion, which is what.
No, no, no. Can we continue to speak about this letter or?
Oh, that's up to the chair.
As we.
You mean after we vote on it, or you mean as in you want to work on it?
If we we are headed about it right back next week, I want.
It is in the Google Doc, so I can send it out. Yeah, if we want to say, you know.
Cause I want to, I want to use the facts as a talking point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, but I would. For lack of better word. I'd like to point out in in the forefront, the direct impact to Grand County, that these uh, that both. Both the personnel uh impact or the.
Right.
And the economic impact, but I I'd like, you know, it's not that I don't love the letter. It just.
Yeah.
When I talk to someone, I'm gonna have three blurbs, and I won't, they're like, I'm gonna have thirty seconds to talk to someone.
I have it in the Google Doc, and I can just send it out tomorrow. You can make, yeah.
Mr. McGann.
What I would suggest is passing the letter, and then uh Jacques and Brian and uh Mike. Have a, you know, a fact sheet to go on the other side of the letter, you know, attached to the letter that says. This is how many employees are at risk. This is a pop, this, you know, put it more like in a bullet point thing rather than a. The letter could represent the emotional, and then you could have the bullet points that you hand to them, if this is how it's going to negatively affect our community. And we would, you know, we could trust you to do that. Pass the letter to this.
So then if there's no more, I know it was Commissioner McGann that made the motion. Was it you, Jacques?
I did second it, yeah.
And Commissioner Hadler that seconded it. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Thank you. I take that as an eye, Brian. You were cutting out a little bit. That passes unanimously, and we will move on to the last of our action items, number fourteen. Letter to Senator Hinkins regarding HB four seventy eight, brine mining amendments. Commissioner Hadeen.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so this has been something I've been following a long time, specifically with with some of the brine activity. That's been going on around Green River, Green River, but people should acknowledge that on the east side of Green River, there's a little jigsaw. Go puzzled piece going on in Grand County is definitely affected within that. That being said, you received um a a letter from a concerned citizen. I've been staying on track with that. I've gone to many meetings up there. Um, and so this was really great, actually, to see this being run. I believe the goal of is it it is to put some guardrails on brine mining. Um, there basically weren't a lot, to be honest, and so we're going in and doing something kind of. Venturing into the unknown without ha- having these guardrails in place. And then basically, there's still not, I mean, I know there's been some royalty talk about the brine coming off of the Great Salt Salt Lake. But still not within these type of systems. So anyways, the goal of this, which by the way, it is still sitting there. It's um, it's currently on its second reading in the Senate. Senator Hinkins is the floor sponsor, so my thought is that we just get this to him. I I don't expect it to change the legislation much. My goal was really so that he just sees kind of the bigger picture as to what are concerns. And I'm just gonna highlight just the bullet points, concerns that hopefully all of us would have regarding this deep. Um, well, brine mining, we're talking about the well in Green River is eleven thousand feet deep, just so you guys have an understanding. The intrusion of brine and effluent into freshwater aquifers and surface water aquifer systems. So one thing that did happen in Green River when they were drilling that well, there was a blowout. You know, you're going through these gaseous pockets, it blew out, it then moved over. Got went past their site, which is their site was very small, flowed into an old uranium tailing site. And then was very close to a wash that flowed into the Green River. It was stopped before, but the goal is like. You don't have blowouts that eventually can contaminate your surface water systems. The lo, and so the second one is location of brine and injection wells should be an adequate distance from those surface water systems. Consumptive use of water rights, there appears to be a misunderstanding as to the nature of water rights being utilized within this brine extraction. I'll tell you that that has been, they were basically stayed the water rights, they have now been approved. But um, they use a ton of water, and it's in this, in theory, non consumptive nature. Um, but I'll state that I think there's still a lot of contention, but I, these are again, just things that I want the senator to be thinking about. Concerns, if the water is classified as consumptive, the Bureau of Rec is asking for major reduction in the water use of the Colorado River Basin. And thus, this, if you, you know, you take your water from Colorado River and you push it towards. Ex- brine extraction, which is fine, know that it's gonna slow municipality, municipal growth or agricultural. Agricultural development, interests of adjacent landowners, those people that live next door to those wells. I mean, literally, that well was sandwiched between I seventy, just to the east of the Green River and between homes. And so that well is sitting right there. So just understanding that, you know, what does that mean for people's quality of life? And then lastly, and sorry, Bill, I did make that change, and it's not on here, so we'll make sure that it gets on here. Cause this, sorry, we talked about the benefits of brine extraction for local communities via royalties. And we talked about adding, you know, royalties, that fraction that also goes to the C I B, that then comes back to communities. Because right now, they don't exist. So the fact is, most of our. Recent brine activity is from, specifically from Australia. Um, the Paradox Basin is one of the richest, they believe, lithium areas in the world, so they're coming. And they're taking our resources and walking away, you know, providing some jobs, which is all well and good, but. Um, different than gas and oil, where they pay sixteen and a half percent royalties to local communities, C I B, for example. So the, I don't, again, again, I don't expect it to change the legislation. A lot of these pieces are in there, little nuances. But that hope, it just kind of opens their eyes for the future, looking at this brine extraction, if it becomes a larger industry.
Um, yeah, Mike, I'll go to you in just a second. I'd like to comment too, and I, I think that some of the intent of this bill was missed.
Right.
Um, because really what this, the majority of this bill is dealing with is what's going on downhole.
Right.
Not above surface, the water rights and all that stuff, I. I mean, it's, it's fine that we send these concerns up there, but this bill specifically. Majority of it is dealing with what's underground rather than, uh, because they start going into this brine mining. We're into our neighbors mineral and royalty rights, and so that stuff mitigates so much. That they could, one company could be pulling from another's mining claims, so. But I just thought I'd make that point, and then Mike, feel free to go ahead.
I wish I would more update on the bill, but uh, this is twofold. They made changes posted yesterday. Do you know what those changes were?
Uh, and I don't, I didn't.
I I don't know either. I just know that they, they made amendment yesterday for the bill. Uh. Back to a previous statement between you act. I could have added these concerns to Senator Hinkins last week.
Yeah.
I.
Well, we're gonna hand them to him tomorrow.
And I, I.
So.
Not trying to grandstand or when it's nice to send a letter to grandma. But if you expect to be part of the inheritance, you better go to grandma's house. Is is it a good analogy? You have to, like, face to face is a million times more.
Well, I've been on a brine tour with Senator Hinkins. He knows, he knows the concerns. We had, we had discussions with him. It was a while ago, but.
Okay. Oh, I'd, I would have loved to hand these right, or the concerns directly to him.
Hopefully he'll get this.
Okay. Yes.
So I'm just, I'm just interested in the difference between the board of. Oil mining and gas and the division of oil mining and gas. Um, this. HB four seventy eight talks about the board consistently. Um, and I thought the division is who is actually that would have control over these items that you are listing as concerns. Don't have the slightest clue, couldn't answer your question, sorry.
Um, yes, the board is the policymaking body of the division of oil, gas and mining. So it's like, it's like their legislative version.
Yes, Commissioner Martinez.
So, and and I could be wrong on this, but is it my understanding, Trish, do you understand that it's the board? That's in charge of the uh uh uh, the legal issues that has to deal with this? And then it's the division that has to deal with the environmental issues? It sounds like they might be two separate, two separate uh 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 um decisions right there.
I don't, I don't know, but I don't address, you know, the difference between the board and the division in here. I mean, I I'm sure it's, it's relevant.
But the bill, the bill, the bill, the bill deals with the board. So I'm just, I'm just trying to say, are we sending questions about that that should be handled with the division?
These aren't questions.
That doesn't deal with, that doesn't deal with the bill itself?
These, well, the, a lot of these items are within the bill itself. I pulled out little pieces that are just that I wanted to highlight for Senator Hinkins. I think the goal, again, is just for him to see what local concerns are. And again, I've been working specifically with the Green River community, but the Grand County residents in that community for a while. And so this is an opportunity to send up our concerns.
No, I got it, but I'm I'm trying to understand where these concerns are, so maybe you could kind of elaborate a little bit more on that, so that I can understand it.
Like within the bill? You want me to pull up the bill and find them in the bill?
No, I just want to understand why, where where these concerns exactly are coming from.
Um, well, I've gone to many public meetings up in Green River. I went on a brine tour with with Jacques and Bill. This was maybe a year ago ish. Um, we went on a brine tour. A lot of those were concerns were brought up specifically regarding royalties. From like Sitla brought them up because Sitla, you know, they're bypassing, you know, agencies like Sitla. So a lot of those concerns were brought up then. Um, there's endless. I mean, there's, I could send you endless newspaper articles about the stay on those water rights when they were released. Concerns to local community. I mean, I should have attached all of that.
Yeah, we have, but my, my, my concern is, is I'm, I'm actually looking. At the bill itself, where are the problems in the bill, where you're seeing these, these issues.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not trying to point out specific line items and stating that they're a problem. I don't think I make, I don't think I make that claim. I'm simply stating like, hey, just so you know, these are things that overall we should be looking at when we're looking at brine mining. In this region.
But my, my, my question is.
I don't, I don't try to parse out any like, hey, I would take this verbiage and move it to this verbiage.
Uh, yeah, I got you, but 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 my main point is, is are are the comments relevant, right?
I think they're relevant.
If the comments, if your comments are about the environmental concerns and those environmental concerns are held by the division, they're not part of this bill right here.
Not just environmental concerns, it's economic concerns also and social concerns. It covers everything, ecological, social and economic.
That's why I'm trying to figure out where the actual, where in the bill actually that 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 there's concerns at that you have with it.
Yeah, I just stated, I'm, I didn't break down via line items. If you don't want to vote for.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't have, I, yeah, thanks. I just, I just wanted to have a better understanding, and I don't have a clear enough understanding, I think. I don't know, uh, I believe that.
We had a clear understanding of that TRT bill, but it went through. Just my point, just my opinion.
Hey, Trish, let's stick on one comment right, or one, one, one process right now, and let's not get lost in the weeds. Um. I'm just trying to understand this right here, so that I can, that I, if you want me to support this letter, I have to understand what the problems are and what we're actually saying right here. And right now, you're not doing a good enough job. Pardon me, I'm still talking. You're not doing a good enough job right now, explaining to me why I should support this. I don't understand where the issues are coming from, and it's not that I'm for or against anything that you're saying, I just, I don't understand it.
Well, I can back up, I can go back, I don't know, I've probably been going up there for a couple of years. Where do you want me to start?
I'd like to move to Commissioner Hadler, if I could please, and then Commissioner McGann.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate it. Um, yeah, I, 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 I just read the letter as as us presenting concerns. And and just informing the sponsor of the bill as to some of those concerns, I don't know. But anyway, I, to that point, I would move to approve the letter to Senator Hinkins regarding HB four seventy eight, uh, concerning the brine mining.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner Hadeen. Do we have further comments? Mary, where are you wanting to speak?
I, I was gonna speak that. Uh, that, you know, I I support the matter. I think letting them know, just uh, even if it's not specifically, that these are, these are concerns that we need to. Because Brian, it's not going away. You know, it's gonna be here for a while. And I think we're gonna have to be constantly aware of what's happening with our lithium, our brine and all of the extractions. Because they do very good jobs and money to our community, but they also can bring some pretty big environmental issues, so. Uh, but then the other comment I wanted to make was, I've been sitting here and I've been trying not to take offense. But I don't want to be lectured anymore about going up to the state. I was the only commissioner for years that went to the state all the time. I know the importance of being there, that I'm taking. I know the importance of being there, that I'm taking a year off because I know a lot of people have their eyes on it. And I appreciate, I appreciate that I'm not spending three to seven to eight hours a week on those Zoom meetings. I've done it for years and you guys are doing a great job. You're doing a better job with the, with the committee than I did. So I don't want to be lectured, Mike. I don't want to be lectured, Bill, and I don't want to be lectured anymore on the importance I know it. And I try not to take offense, but it's getting to me.
Point taken, Mary. Um, I hope it wasn't intended.
I don't think it was intended.
As lecturing.
It felt like a lecture.
Uh, I'd like to speak to it for just a minute too, because for one, this bill started with a representative and that's Mr. Volender. And so in reality, your letter should be going to Mr. Volender and then possibly forwarded on to Mr. Hinkins. My personal feelings are your letter would be better taken outside of the bill because it doesn't address the bill. I think we all share the concerns that you have with the economics and the different portions of it that you have in your letter, but they're not related to the bill.
There's many of these items are within the bill. And if, if in the future, you you want something to vote for, that's fine. I'm, you know, in the, uh, just know that I'm.
Asking you to defend it. I just want to put a few points out, Trish, that's all. And then we'll call for a vote on it. I'm not arguing what, any of your points in your letter. But because it started with Mr. Volender, in reality, it's his bill. And that's where the, the letter should go if you're trying to affect this bill. And then it would be forwarded on to Mr. Hinkins because he's the floor sponsor in the Senate. But I, I want to go clear back to your original where you started out with, we all know that there's a well out in Green River and that it's affected the community out there. But we constantly hear about the blowout. And I want you to know that in my lifetime, I've been on a drill rig that burnt down. I've been on a drill rig that melted down from hot steam. I've seen blowouts. I've participated in fixing them and they're a regular part of life.
I totally understand that. I know that.
But it feels like it's constantly for the rest of us that this is a huge. I don't know what the political statement we're trying to make. And so we're trying to separate that we've, this letter's directed towards a bill that it doesn't really address the bill. There's also the political side of some of the statements. And I'm just saying that it, it sends a mixed messages to many of us who really just want to see it handled properly.
Right.
And the economics and the royalties come back to the state and so.
Read this, you did read this letter and you gave me some feedback and I, and I, and I inserted that feedback. I don't know why I said, I put the, it's the wrong draft here. Um, I, I, I totally know that. I, I have good friends that were roughnecks. I understand it. I think you understand that where that happened could have had really detrimental effects, right? And that, and our goal with, with making statements like this, and many of these items are within the bill about how to, how to stop. But guardrails stop contaminant, cam- contamination of our surface, water and aquifers. It's within that bill. The goal is to, you know, put some guardrails on so where it doesn't affect those systems, right? I, I agree with you. I, I, I know blowouts happen. I, I, I'm perfectly cognizant of that. The goal is not to, you know, contaminate Green River. Um, you know, I went to a lot of meetings up there and I've, and I'm trying to represent the concerns of the community, but also our concerns when we went on that Brian tour. I mean, SITLA was mad as a mashed cat. You know, they want royalties out of this type of mining. And the fact is like what you're mentioning pooled, they are sticking a straw in the ground in a very, that, that, that parcel up there is like next to nothing and sucking in those resources from adjacent properties. You're absolutely right. They're pooled resources. And so I think it's great that this bill is trying to address some of those items. And all I'm just saying is saying is like, hey, let's just, I'm not asking him to change verbiage. I'm just saying these are our concerns.
I agree with that. Commissioner McCurdy. I'd like to work with you on the next letter too.
Why don't you write the next? How about that?
I want those.
I spend a lot of time on these letters, just so you know.
I think lithium, uh, I think lithium extraction, uh, we should be seeing royalties.
Yeah.
At a much higher rate than we actually are.
Okay, I think that we have a motion by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner Dean. If there's no further discussion, we will move to a vote. All in favor of Tricia's letter? Those opposed?
Aye.
And that passes with three opposed, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCurdy and Commissioner.
I, the I is confusing.
Yeah, did he say I as in he?
Should be a N.
Instant or?
Nay, I, I, I opposed.
I was like you, I thought, was it just delayed?
Yep, nays and ayes, okay.
It's, it's, it's three fifteen in the morning.
Yeah, I had to thank you. Sorry, Commissioner. I give you a hard time, sorry.
Opposed Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCurdy and Commissioner McCandless. And we will move on then, actually before our consent agenda. I would also like to, although I spoke extensively at the last commission meeting, I'd like to again thank Alicia.
Did she come out?
For her service and.
We need to see her.
Yeah. We'll wait for a moment so that she can join us.
Trying to hide in the back.
We weren't gonna let you get a little number, right? You know, I, I spoke last time, but I'll try and do it again, Alicia. Your service here has been impeccable. And I, I spoke last time to the fact that it, it isn't clear where you stand politically. And I think that's extremely important in your position and you've done an exemplary job at it. I, I'm, you're gonna be missed extremely well, dude. I think we've got a good one that you're training in there. Yes, I do, but Alicia, you've, you've done an amazing job in the three years that I've been here, two and a half, and I'm, I'm really appreciative of your service and the way you've treated me and the respect you've given me.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else? Feel free.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you so much, Alicia, especially last year. We had all the turnover and without a county administrator for five months. You've been way more than pulled your weight and, and it was a pleasure working with you. I didn't see a single moment of panic, although I mean, I, I certainly.
And that's good.
Um, so yeah, I just, in, in three years, it's, it's, it has, it's been enjoyable. So thanks and, and best of luck in the future and I'm sure we'll see you around again.
Go ahead, Mary.
Ah, yes, yes. I want to dittle what has been said and also say that, you know, the improvements you've made with the, with the agenda and how easy it is to use. It's been a massive improvement and, and you're attentive to detail and getting things done, but yet then knowing when you just have to get it done, you know, that you don't allow the details to slow you down to the point that the time is passed. And I echo what you said about holding your, your opinions in such close to your heart. I prob- it probably wasn't always easy, but, and, and, and I really appreciate it. I bet your husband got fearful. And, uh, you've gone through a lot. It's been a really at ti- it's times I've felt like I was on a roller coaster or, or skydiving. I mean, it's been quite a few years and you've been here and you've helped and you know, when did you come on in two thousand and?
End of twenty, I came over here in twenty twenty two. I came on to the county at the end of twenty two.
Yeah, so you know, you were here for a lot of important things and we really appreciate it.
Anybody else? Mike, go ahead.
I've known you since we were kids. Statement was, uh, I haven't seen anyone in this position be more even keeled and, and that high, uh, high work ethic, uh, we, we all can't speak highly enough of you. Uh, we wish you the best. Uh, we hope for continued updates, so.
Yeah.
We'll see how you're doing.
I'm not going too far.
Yeah, it's like down the road.
Go ahead, Melody.
Yeah, I was really looking forward to working with you. I mean, I, I know where to find you and.
Oh, geez.
Yes, sir. I, Alicia, I think it, it's been stellar. It has been stellar having you here. Um, without a doubt, I, when I've seen commissioners need anything, you've been there, you've been uh, uh, a self, you know, willing to sacrifice. You're here late hours, you're willing to put the effort in and you're reliable, you're consistent, you're constant. Um, and, and one of the, it's, that's one of the hard things to see folks, uh, that have your skill side, your talent, your patience and your willingness to do the work is you're destined for great things. And it's wonderful to see you share your time here. Um, it's bittersweet to see you go. Um, it's wonderful that you'll have more opportunities ahead. Um, but I think the county was well served and I think a lot of times the public will never know uh, the, the amount of work and effort that you put in. Um, and it's tough and it's thankless at times and you get yelled at and you handle all those things. And, and I can say that, um, you have incredibly large shoes to fill and you'll be, you'll, you know, achieve great things and it'll be exciting.
Thank you, Alicia.
Well, I just want to say, I'm trying to do it and not cry, but I really genuinely, because this was so, so sweet and so kind and all of your guys' words mean a great deal to me. I take a lot of value in my work and how I present myself. And so it's nice to know that that's appreciated and I have felt genuinely appreciated by every single one of you. Past commissioners, past bosses, everyone all together. And Quinn and I did have a, a rough few months there, but I think, I think we made the best of it. And, you know, without you guys and support and all of the department heads that I've worked with, they've been absolutely phenomenal. And we're really, really lucky to have so many great people here. I feel very blessed about that. Thank you.
Chairman, I'd just like to thank Alicia and, and let her know that the county appreciates the work she has done. Hmm. Um, there's things that, that she has balanced between personal and work that have been exemplary. And her focus has always been what she can do for the county. Make sure Quinn and I have everything we need. Uh, she's helped me tremendously since I've been here, even though it's caused her much more work and concentration and effort. Uh, she's been great and I appreciate her help. And the county is, is indebted to how she has, has undertaken her position. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I want to go back and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing we'll do is move into the consent agenda item. And Mr. Reidman, I want to acknowledge your patience and appreciation for you sitting there so patiently. When your item is even in the consent agenda, unless somebody had pulled it out, it won't even get a discussion. It'll just be voted on and approved. But again, your patience has been appreciated. It's, um, it's not always ea- easy watching some of these debates, so thank you for all of that. And so I will go into our consent agenda. We have the approval, excuse me. Approval of the agenda items, the approval of meeting minutes for December three, six, nine and seventeen of twenty twenty four, January seven and twenty one and January twenty one of twenty twenty five and February four and eighteen of twenty twenty five. Boy, we have got some minutes in there today. Okay, and then also we will do the ratification of payment of bills. And that is in the amount of six hundred and forty eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty nine dollars and thirty eight cents with a total payroll of three hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty three dollars and thirty seven cents with a grand total of nine hundred and fifty two thousand, three hundred and ninety two dollars and seventy five cents. And then we will go on. We've got the amendment to professional services agreement with Jones and Mill Engineering. We've got a copier replacement for the Grand County Recorder's Office. Ratification of appointment of Grand County's Community Renewable Energy Board Member. Item F, volunteer appointments to the Grand County Fair Board. G, local consent, single event permit for Toyota Trail Boss twenty twenty five. H, the ground lease for ground lease with Alan and Nathan Reidman. And I, the recreation restoration infrastructure grant for non-motorized trail maintenance in the LaSalle Mountains. I think that's it. I, um, please, Jac.
Uh, move to a further consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. That passes unanimously. We will move on to our discussion items, ordinance six thirty one and six twenty two land use code amendments specific to camping outside of permitted use areas. Melody.
So before I was a commissioner, I had, I had many comments about this particular ordinance. And then also your doctoring came on that very first meeting and talked about, talked about it and it seemed to be heard. So I thought it was good to review this. I know that, um, attorney Stephen Stocks doesn't like laws that are not enforced. Um, I did forward you guys all the, the comments from Josh Green and I also talked to, um, Mr. Black as well today. Um, he had mentioned that he's been there for about a year and a half. And then that, that year and a half, he does, he says it's about ten complaints a year that he has five older cases prior to, um, him being hired and that he has not had time to follow up on. And then five active, uh, cases that he's currently working on and nine closed cases. He says that, uh, people have mixed reactions when he, um, comes to their doors and talk to them about this. And, you know, he said unless it's a health and safety concern, then, then that's about the only time that he is out looking for, for health and safety concerns and then he would, um, he would go to the door, you know, and talk to them, but other than that, it's all complaint based. Um, and I, I do think that by reading the ordinance and the land use code that kids camping in their backyard or sleepovers could not be enforced. But it's funny that people would call in for that, you know, as a consequence, because it doesn't really, it doesn't fit in my, you know, it doesn't fit. But anyways, if, if people have comments or want to see changes to this or leave it alone, I just thought I'm bringing it forth for discussion.
Well, is it okay if we have discussed, when was the last time we brought this up?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna turn the chair over to Melody.
Oh, yes.
Here while I take a quick break and I'll be.
Remember the last time we brought this up to the commission six months ago, a little longer than that?
It was, it was longer. I think it was when, it was, it feels like six months ago.
Yeah, it hasn't been the last year, year that I've been watching.
It was with Mall- Mallory was here because the conversation revolved around doing an ad campaign or an education campaign. And I think the conversation there was more about camping in the context of utilizing one's property, not for the kids camping outside, but instead, uh, either a fifth wheel parked in the, in the driveway or something on the back lot or camp, and you know, having a bunch of camping sites set up on a property. That was the context that we've seen it in. I think that the, the conversation also was around an ability for them to apply for a particular zoning overlay that would allow them to transition in with different appropriate zoning. That's where there was some, or there were some places that had like campers that didn't have hookups and they had issues with dumping, uh, gray water. That was the last conversation and we've talked about it a couple of different ways. And we've, we've been hesitant to, when it, when it gets brought up, and this is Commissioner Hedin and I have talked about this a lot. Um, we get folks that are really hesitant to touch this issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, kind of my memory of the last time we brought it to the, the commission, we talked about the health and safety piece. And we talked about neighbors, you know, if you're affecting neighbors, but obviously if you're affecting neighbors, hopefully they'd file a complaint. And then we talked about the educational piece, which, you know, I do, like, I'm getting really close to being able to produce something to be sent out about dark skies. And so, and, you know, it's feasible if that's the path that you guys want to take as far as kind of a first step. We could do that. Um, the price, it was, it was, I think in the end, I can't remember, Mick kind of helped, has helped me out with it. I think it's about five grand to do all of the, can't remember. Anyways, it was
It's a couple of grand.
Couple of grand to do, to, to do all the graphics, produce it and to mail it out to all county residents. I mean, I definitely think. I mean, I definitely think when this, when I saw this on the agenda, again, I noted between like Tom Toms. And the four-way stop, I probably saw twenty campers, like. Cars next to them. I mean, it is, it is a huge, it's happening, but it's like.
All right, who's next? Sorry, I didn't catch. Mary, you wanna go?
I was just saying, I I just, it's question mark for speed or not. It seems like the main concern people have about this. Is like kids camping in the backyard, like somebody coming to visit me for one day and, you know. Things, you know, you live a small house. That seems to be the concern is that somehow that's the amount of camp with the regular. Uh, uh, ordinance. I'm wondering if there's any way we can tweak this ordinance to somehow make it so that. It's clear that we're not talking about kids having a camp, you you know, sleeping in their backyard. We're not talking about. Person that comes and visits and stays for one day. We're talking about people that are.
Living.
Are living on the street. Probably a lot of them have have really nice cars and really nice trailers could afford to put them in a. In a RV. Uh, anyway, I I wonder if there's any way or if we could look at that and. And see if there's a way to tweak the ordinance so that it gets that message across so that we're not lumping that really down.
So I I think generally it's the enforcement mechanism. We're not going out and enforcing this. We may get. Um, if illegal or out of compliance to do it once and the reason why is. If you permit it one day, then everyone's gonna say, well, this is the first day. They just got to town. It's the first day.
Yeah, okay.
And so you look at it that way. I I don't know that we've had any that had gone to the level of my enforcement, that it was the kids. Camping outside. I think the ones that are getting the most attention are when. People are defecating and, you know, the property or they don't have the cleanup, so they don't have the electricity or we have. Extension cords running from the ha- the main house to the A, you know, to the AC unit and the RV that doesn't have power. Those are the things, but one thing I I'll say is, right now, because we've we brought this up, there is a hesitancy from my office. To enforce this, because I brought it up with last year's commission and this year's commission and it was received with warrant. Where everyone said, well, let's educate folks. We can do that. Um, but I, without the threat of. And again, I'm prosecutor, so without some sort of a threat mechanism, and and I don't like doing that. But you're going to have some bad actors that are going to.
They're gonna take advantage.
They're gonna take advantage of it. And and we could say, you guys could tell me, hey, Stephen, policy is if it's about kids camping out out back. And if it's about, you know, a a de minimis use of it. Maybe we let it slide, but that's the problem. When you start looking at the law and then saying, well, we. We let these folks do it, but not these, then you're you're building in discrimination within it and then we go. Do we apply it one way for the long-term locals versus the new locals versus? So that's the stickiness of it. That's why it's black and white, yes, no.
So what would help your office?
Uh, clear, clear direction from the commission on what, whether we wanna enforce this or or not. Um. That's that's the tricky thing.
So is that, would would it be enough of a direction if we said we want it enforced, if people living? You know, not even in at dark dark places. I mean, not even, I mean, some of them aren't even in front of people's houses. They're in. These weird almost county properties where they pulled over and.
We can prior, we can, we can prioritize it. If if the commission tells myself what it is that you guys want to focus on. We can focus on that if that's.
Cause I think a lot of us agree that it's a healthy, it's a safety and a health issue when you have somebody camping forever. Somewhere where, you know, they're. Anyway, all right, let's go to Mike.
Uh, voluntary compliance is the best compliance we get out of this. I would like to clearly. Give uh county attorney's office uh definition sooner than later on enforcement, both. Personal opinion, three-strike rule, voluntary compliance, first, first. Letter two. Having a heavier hand, third. Prosecution.
That's generally what they, that's generally what they do, but again, like to. Best case scenario, like easier thing, the easiest thing that we could do. We've got somebody that has code compliance. They can drive around and they can personally and and Brian has a hand up, just uh uh FYI. Um. Best, easiest thing, if you had compliance, be able to go out and go, that's camping. I'm gonna go interact with them, because if you have to wait for somebody to tell them, camp camping is something that I think. I I think he can handle on his own, like he can look at it and go, there's a tent, there shouldn't be a tent there. Go knock and say, oh, it's five kids doing a sleepover. I'm not gonna rat a five kids doing a sleepover, but if it's like. Hey, that tent's there on whatever street and it's there this week and the next week and the next week. Then you're having somebody that's utilizing their property in a way that technically it shouldn't be. Again, somebody comes back from wherever. If if you guys give clear direction, what it is you guys don't wanna see, I can, I can work with that, but what we've had is a real reluctance to making that step.
Okay, and then uh Bill's next and then you can take the chair back over.
And Brian's right too.
Okay. Um, I I just think it's important that we we remember here that part of this is a problem that we're somewhat. Hard of. And that is, there's no place for these people, a lot of them to be. Now, I I know there's some on the periphery that are abusing this system. But there's a a huge amount of people that don't have a place to park those trailers. And so when somebody allows somebody to live on their trailer and then we come along and we wanna start enforcing this. We've gotta have an avenue. Where are we gonna put them? We've we've gotta have something in place here. To take care of these people because we, I mean, I know Commissioner Martinez can probably speak to it. He had him down on his property down there. And they got moved out by the city. There, there's a huge need and there's gotta be somewhere where we can put them and so I wanna be real careful. I'm, I'm not in favor of going after people that don't have another option. If. If there's people that are, as we say, sleeping in tents, defecating outside. Clearly abusing something that that it just shouldn't be that way. We need to look that situation over. Are we number one, making them homeless? Are we helping them find a place to go? Do we have agencies who can help them find a place to go? And and so it's, it isn't just as easy in my mind as, okay, write them a ticket three times and then. Send them a pack and wait, we, it's a pretty big complicated problem, so. Uh, I know that Brian has been waiting and then I will go to Mike and then I'll go to Trish unless I have you two reversed, but Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I look back at when this was originally passed. Um, you know, I remember uh uh Jac, you were pretty much on the fence on 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 going either which way. Just because you knew the people that it was going to affect. Um. You know, I I think that the the thing that ended up moving this thing forward. Was this idea of people who were gonna be renting out their backyards for people to camp in. There was a an online app that was starting to take uh, starting to take place. And people were gonna be able to basically rent out spaces inside of their house or their property for people to come and. Drop their RVs in, and I think that that was the original intent of what we were uh, of what they were trying to stop with that, with the no camping ordinance. Um, I think that it was intended originally not supposed to affect our local workforce. Um, and 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 that seems like what what we're talking about. I mean, what Bill said, I mean, is is exactly right, you know, when we. Kick people out but don't have any place to go. I mean, that's, that's, that's inhumane. Right there. I mean, that's, it's, it's just, it's, it's not fair to them, cause there is no other place for them to go. I mean, there's. There's people, um, you know, that 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 are, that are all around that I see that are, that are in that situation, right? And, you know, is it the greatest situation for the neighborhood? No, but I mean, I don't have the heart to go over there and and go tell them that that they gotta get out of that spot. I mean, there is just, there is no other place for them to go. Um, we don't have a situ- or a a a place set up for them to uh. To 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 keep going and they're and they're the people that 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 are are the uh, the driving force here in our economy. Right? They're all of our servers. They're all of our, you know, our river guides, all of the 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 people who are out there getting it done every day. Um. So, I mean, I I I I I personally would like to see us move away from this ordinance and try to figure out a different. A different avenue for uh uh um, for stopping the behavior that we're not looking to see here, you know, the people here who are. Who are trying to uh uh rent out locations to people from out of town. Um, anyways, that's just my two cents.
All right, I'll go to Mike and then Trish.
I feel like. It being a discussion helps me out uh in discussing this. I feel heavily conflicted. Uh, out of this discussion. Uh. I feel that me being part of the ADO uh program was an attempt to. Eliminate some of the the problems uh and have a place to move some of these people. Uh, personally, uh as. I see it, it didn't do a thing for that and. I would love to create somewhere for them to go, but at that same moment, I I conflict, I have to conflict. Again, my statements because I'm part of the the arguments against. I am for people living in campers. I had to, I did it illegally. I mean, but three years ago now. I understand the need. At the time, but I do not understand the need when the other situations arise. The gray water, the black water, the needs for law enforcement to go over, the. Problems that arise, uh, it it's escalated past. Me being nice in my community, uh, the demand. For the ability for. Uh, Attorney Stocks's office to be be able to take care of some of this has surpassed. It's my own neighborhood, so.
Yes, it it and and just adding a couple more thoughts.
I was next, but that's okay, you can cut.
Well, just just a couple more thoughts. So this went up to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court said this is, this is fine to enforce. The enforce a ban on camping even if there's nowhere else to go. One of the, one of the things, though, that we have to look also is, somebody's benefiting from. The the relationship between somebody applying or somebody having a camper somewhere that it shouldn't and they're likely paying rent. And it doesn't offer that person that's camping legally any protections. And it doesn't offer them any safety. There's, there's a lot of concerns with that. So. I I know these are not, they're not easy decisions to make, but not having a rule on this. Makes it harder for enforcement, makes it harder for for changes. Um, I'd say it makes it even harder for for changes in land use, because if people can take the easy route, the easy route is. Hey, come, come hang out in my yard, all rent you an RV, you can park in my driveway, we'll hook up all electricity. That's much easier than going through P and Z, sitting through meetings, asking for all of those things, so. I I just put it out there, we've talked about it a lot, my position, whatever you guys wanna do, I'm happy to enforce, but I do think that. This is like water, it's gonna go to the easiest place possible and the easiest place possible is being in non-compliance.
And I just wanna apologize.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
Because he tends to give us all some legalities that I. So I apologize that I put him in front of you.
I I I agree with you, Stephen. I wouldn't remove the ordinance in the sense that there are people, uh, I could tell you the exact property that has. Again, it was on that, that little piece of my road yesterday that I could, he has put a sign out. He now has three campers in the back of his house, right? So he is making profit off of it. He's not, he's not advertising it. Cause I don't know where we're at, maybe you can update me in a minute on Airbnb and VRBOs and our ability to use those sites as monitoring. But I think it's something that's important, but you know, using social media sites to also monitor. Um, I think we need to keep something on the books, but I also think we need to elevate this level of, do we want active or passive? Compliance, right? So thus far, we're just using passive where we're waiting for complaints to come in. If we wanna become active. That's been a big debate, we, you know, but I think the next step, just me personally, is doing an educational piece. Because hopefully it would then mo- motivate people to understand that they could file a complaint, that it's anonymous. And start dealing with some of those issues that, like that place, I'll tell you, it's getting a little, it's over the top. I mean, he's now, you know, he's definitely affecting his adjacent properties. He's got a load of people living there, a ton of campers, you know. And he's making a, he's making a profit off of it.
Vividing off, pivoting off that. The hard, the other, other, the other hard part is if somebody knows that we're not going to do anything.
Right.
Playing, then why are you gonna call your neighbor?
Yeah.
And and I think that's a really awkward spot, so that now if you write in, that now your neighbors know you as some. You know, tattletale or whatever you wanna call it. Um, I I think that's, that's hard. I think it would be, I I'm at the point, though. This is an issue we've talked about enough. I I'm more enforcement. I'm done with education. It's been long enough. I think people will know. I, it's not my decision, though, it's your guys' decision. Uh, and then we're we're on the Airbnb case. Uh, we can't use merely posting online. They may, they passed a law in Utah about that. You can't just use that. So we, what we would, what a good thing that we could start doing is actually um renting. And so we go out and solicit and try to rent overnight and then we use that information and uh charge them with violation.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, there is.
I'm, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Hadler. He's been very patient with me.
No, no worries. And then I don't know if Dan has his hand up because he wanted to be a part of the conversation or if he just left it up. It's the legacy hand, but whatever. And anyway, yeah, I, this this is a super, it's funny, if you guys look at that ordinance, it was from January fifth, twenty twenty-one and it was Trish's in my very first commission meeting. This was our very first contentious item and I remember it, it's super well and and Brian was right, I actually was very conflicted, I still am. I had, I decided not to vote for this either for or against. Um, and a lot of it is because I I was the guy who for. For four years I was in town, was camping legally or crapping on couches or parking in driveways. Um, and 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 I was working here, so that, I think that's. That's, that's a tough one for me, because, yeah, I've had plenty of employees over the years who've done the same thing. I've done it. Um, had lots of friends, et cetera, and and I don't, I don't know how you differentiate that. I I agree with Stephen that we do need enforcement and actually, Brian's half right about the original intent of this. Part of it was because our county attorney at the time did ask us. Because we were getting a lot of complaints on these long-term campers and she was looking for a enforcement mechanism. Uh, so that that was, in my memory, that was the main reason we passed it. Brian goes so right in that we all, there was the other aspect as well where. Um, there, there was an app where people were, you know, I forget what it was called. Hipcamp, that was exactly right, yeah, and that was, that was, that was a problem too, so. I I don't think what we have is perfect. I think we do need some enforcement, but I also think we need to have some compassion and uh, I don't. I don't, I don't know where that golden medium is.
Okay, I I would like to go to Dan and then I would come back to Trish and then Mike, but I would like them to be very short. I think we beat this horse to death. So I don't, I think we're all, where we move on, but Dan, go ahead, please.
I ju- I just wanted to relay, um, one of the. ADOs that did get approved and actually got built, uh, it's one of the very few, most of them. Um, stalled out when they found out what it was gonna take to to build the UDOT. Um, improvements that UDOT was requiring for the additional use, but. He has complained, not vociferously, but he did complain that he went through all the proper hoops to get his thing approved. He sunk fifty thousand dollars in his property, putting in the utilities, putting in the trees on each lot, putting in all the thing and and. People up and down the road, lives on Spanish federal, are still just doing it and we're not doing anything about it. So.
I appreciate it. That's, that's been insight. I do appreciate that, Dan. And do you know, is he full? Well, I don't know how many units he had, but is he?
He had two empty as as of the time that he complained out of, I think he's got uh six or seven, you know, but he said part of it is that. I have to charge, I think he's charging eight hundred or eight fifty of space and he's like, I know that that's a high price, but. In order to recoup the cost that I put into the property to to do all this, that's what he feels he needs to charge.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. Trish, go ahead.
I should make a point that Stephen, I mean, you guys are enforcing, so when I've made complaints, because I'll tell you, my, my street is a hotbed. Of illegal camping. When I have made complaints, you can send a letter and it resolves it. I mean, a letter is sent and it resolves it. And my guess is, obviously, if it didn't resolve it, there would, I guess we, we, we don't have a next step, but. They are enforcing it if a complaint is made.
Yeah, but I, I, I'd like more, I mean, we're just having this conversation.
Okay.
And even with these next, you know, if we have two comments and that's it, we're, we're not. I don't know what we accomplished. Not being, not being, you know, we've talked a little bit about theoretically, but. I don't know what we accomplished, not being, not being, you know, we've talked a little bit about theoretically, but. I don't know, I'm, I'm really, I'm really, one day I wanna have this meeting where it's like, you know what? Yes, we're gonna change it a little bit, well, then we want you to enforce it, and, and, and let the co-compliance, uh, person go do his job without being complaint driven. So I, I don't know, then it's just you playing the lottery of whether people complain, if, whether you neighbors like you or not.
So I think, you know, I'm not saying, maybe we come back to this and, and people need to decide whether they want passive or active enforcement. On this issue, and then also, wha- what exactly, I mean, Mike, you've already talked about, but like, what do we wanna see? And maybe we don't, I don't really wanna do this tonight, but what do we wanna see regarding enforcement, right, like those steps, and maybe it's some banter we could have. Um, anyways, I, I, I think we're maybe getting somewhere, maybe not.
Go ahead, Mike.
Couple parts, I'll keep it quick, I'd like a workshop on this, next meeting.
Oh, we do, we, we.
Yeah, do it next.
Oh, yeah, do exactly, okay, a month out.
Yeah.
And I'd like to define, in that workshop, I'd like to define some. Define some objectives and some answers, the set objectives, then and there, this has been talked a few times with me on the question. Who, my point is to follow Dan Stent's exact words, I am part of the ADO project. I put twenty thousand dollars into the ADO project to be in compliance and down my street. And down the street she's talking about, I cannot compete with people who are doing it, I'm not going in that. Not going that direction, I understand, uh, Dan Stent's, uh, words from the other ADO project down the road from it. He cannot compete, even though he did it legally, he cannot compete with people doing it illegally to a profit.
Goodly, all right, Brian, we're gonna take a short comment here, if you don't mind, and then we're gonna move on to the next one.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's perfect, yeah, I don't, I don't need long. Um, yeah, just, just the one thing is, is, you know, we just, if we are gonna be moving forward with the enforcement of it. You know, I just wanna make sure that we're showing the compassion that Jacque was talking about, whatever we can do to figure out how to work that in. Because the people who are gonna suffer are, are, are most vulnerable, right? And, and I don't wanna see that the people who are suffering, right, the guy that's making money off of it, sure, I can understand, like. I can understand that, that, that problem right there, but the people who are really gonna be suffering are the people who are gonna be moved out of their places at the state now.
Thanks, Brian, okay, I will move us on to the independent contractor agreement for AIJ and ALJ.
Okay, this is, um, we're gonna talk about two things tonight, one is just as much generally. So as we discussed, you had two items tonight with a follow-up from changes to the employee handbook, one was the rear services council. And the second is the ALJ process replacing the commission as the hearing officers on these particular deals. This is a sample contract for, um, for an administrative law judge, an administrative law judge is an attorney generally. Uh, normally they're not a judge, but we call them administrative law judges because they take an administrative matter and they weigh it based on the merits, based on applicable law. And hopefully they are, like Mr. Call does, um, savvy on the topic, they will definitely be savvy on the topic. And then they will issue a ruling that would be consistent with what a judge would do, and that saves the party's time, effort, energy and money. So this is a sample for you guys, just for your guys' digestion, there's no action item tonight, but I wanted to give it to you guys. Um, because the next step, if the commission is favorable to this, um, Kristi and I will go out and look for, for someone to do this type of work. Generally, they charge in that range of a hundred and fifty, if we can get somebody wanting to give back to their community. And then more reasonably is probably gonna be in the three or four hundred dollars an hour range. They would only be paid by the hour, and it's similar to how Craig calls or is as an ALJ. They pay for the time and the hour spent on the project, um, it's a huge savings in my mind to the county. Because instead of trying to schedule a hearing with the seven of you, plus myself, Mark Quinn, et cetera. Um, we just have the attorneys meet with the ALJ and present the arguments and the case there. So that's the contract for that ALJ process, did you folks have questions on what that looks like? Or if you're good with it, we'll look out for somebody to provide this service and then bring back the contract for you to sign, and then they will be dormant. And so we need them, and then they'll pop out bushes and do all the attorney project stuff.
Jacque, go ahead. So it would be a situation like Craig Call, it'd be like a, like a hearing officer.
Exactly.
Exactly, and then, and then what, what kind of pool of people do we, do we put this contract out to, would it be someone like Craig?
Yeah, it's similar, but different, different, um, field of expertise, so, yeah, exactly, A, HR.
Yes, yes, and, but there's, so there, so just from my understanding, there's, 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 there's some of these people in the state of Utah, and, and then they. Entertain contracts from various political entities such as ourselves and.
Exactly, I got you, so normally you, I mean, theoretically in a bigger city, you might have a, a civil, uh, civil. I mean, theoretically, a county attorney in a different county, maybe they finished that work, they wanna do something on the side, they retired, they can pick up a contract like this. Somebody that does, um, HR work in, uh, same job, for example. They have no conflicts over here, they can put out this contract, it's not going to be an exceptionally lucrative contract, but there's a potential that it, uh, that it brings business for them.
And, and these people that would be entertained, these, this contractor are all qualified, they're.
Yes, we're not, Wendy, yeah, we're gonna go probably look to the trust and the pool and see who they would recommend for the position.
Great.
And then we probably want somebody with at least a decade of experience in the HR world. And they would basically handle all the things, all of the challenges.
Perfect, and again, we don't have very many of these each year.
Right, it's a few in between.
Nah, nah, this is great stuff, thank you.
No, but, oh, right, but any, this is the first of two parts, so any questions on just the contract general? Second portion of it, we've had, um, there's a hearing that's been previously scheduled or that we've, uh, talked about. With an individual that has an application before the commission, an appeal from an HR decision, the initial BS, uh, that. I've been communicating, and we are both in agreement that they would be willing to do so with an ALJ in lieu of the county commission. I haven't, um, I haven't heard of anybody not wanting to do that, um. Generally, I've not talked to any of you about that particular topic, but it's our position. Presented an individual that they would also like to utilize an ALJ. We would have resources allocated to that, they've selected two ALJs that they'd be going to use, we're fine with either of those individuals. So we would proceed in that fashion, if that is something that the commission is okay with, what we'll do is bring it back to you for your approval as. Probably a ratification and a contract, but I wanted to let you folks know about that, that is the last matter before you guys. That would have fallen under the previous, um, process that would require the commission to be involved.
Go ahead, Jacque. Yeah, I, I, again, I, I'd be favorable to that, I think that, I think it's a great idea, um, it, for all the reasons that we talked about, and now we've made these changes.
If that, so if that's the case, then I'll draft documents, we'll put it on the next agenda, um, invite that other counsel to come if, if he would like to come. Jeremy Jones, um, but otherwise it'll be signed and then we'll handle that matter, that ALJ process, um, then be done. So that was all that I had on this issue, any other questions on the ALJs?
And I think we're all in agreement, right, unless there's somebody that wants to speak up that they don't wanna go that route, but I think we, all right. So that's good, okay, we can move on, let's see, that would mean that we are now to our closed session, correct? Yes, Mary?
Make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss, uh, possibility of sell or purchase. Of, of real property and intimate litigation, possibility and.
Motion by Commissioner McGann, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian, all right, thank you, Mr. Reidman, we're gonna close and go into a closed session.